Roll call please, Seth. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Legay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Just for the record, Councilmember Brown is attending by phone. All right, I see, uh, Senator Michelle Reagan is here, and you are a first, Michelle. Yeah. Okay, come on up. I saw Senator of District Twenty Three, Michelle Reagan, and she is going to talk about some important things from the legislature for us.
Fantastic, yeah, they let me out tonight, so it's nice to be out here.
Yeah, welcome. You're still glad to get away from them for a while.
Exactly. Um, thank you so much for having me out to your beautiful town, a nice way to end up my day. Um, a couple of things that I'm working on this year, many of you may know, and if you don't mind, I'd like to give the residents some of my business cards. So, for the contact meetings, if you have any questions after this, um, I was in the House for eight years, and during that time I was the Commerce Chair. And so that was kind of my, my forte, so to speak, and, and what I did. And this year, I was made Chairwoman of the new Elections Committee in the Senate. It's the first time I've ever had that committee. And the reason why is because we have so many election bills, and I wanted to bring a couple of things up that I'm working on because, um, you may read about them or, and/or it may affect, um, your, your town elections. And so, wanted to make sure that, uh, we spoke about that tonight. I'm gonna try to keep this as, and I'm gonna speak one person, and, um, explain two of my bills and, and the pros and the cons that we see. Um, would love to get input from anyone that, uh, um, has anything to, to say. Uh, make it certainly email me if they have questions. Um, I'm gonna use you, Michelle. Uh, do you know that you, right now, could walk into a polling place in Fountain Hills on Election Day with four thousand ballots?
I know that now because you and I had this conversation.
Good. Isn't that crazy? I mean, most people don't realize that there's nothing in our statutes that prohibits this. Now, most states have laws or rules that say, um, they weigh in. So, for example, Minnesota, you can bring ten ballots to, um, the polls, assuming you're collecting for your, your friends or your spouse or some older children. Um, some states it's just one, you and you only, and some states it's just you or your spouse. Uh, was talking to someone from Fountain Hills the other day at the, one of the Fountain Hills meetings, and they said that where they used to live in Virginia, um, he showed up with his brother's ballot to drop it off one time, and that wasn't acceptable. Um, so I didn't think that this, this bill would turn into any sort of controversy. Uh, however, it has, because, um, we have some volunteers that are doing some phenomenal work in registering people to vote. And in registering them to vote, they, they go back and, and say, would you like us to, to return your ballot for you? Um, I personally still have a little bit of trouble with that, uh, that these are mail-in ballots, and the question comes to me, why not just drop it in the mail? It's supposed to stay. There was a day when there actually weren't posters based, when I put stamps on them. But, um, that is one of the, one of the issues that I don't know in, in Fountain Hills if you have groups, organized groups, that go door to door and collect ballots. Some communities have that. Um, we have a couple that, that operate in Scottsdale. Haven't, haven't heard of that out here, but perhaps, um, in your elections, you've, you've seen some of that. And so I guess the question is, 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 should, uh, should we be like the rest of the states and, and kind of curtail that practice? Um, I happen to be voting as in a group sport, something individual and personal. But, um, so we're weighing that, and, um, also, um, the permanent early voting list. Some of your polling locations in Fountain Hills had long lines on Election Day, and a lot of people were forced to cast provisional ballots. And the provisional ballot use went through the roof, and voters afterwards asked, what, why? Why was there this increase in provisional ballots? And after the election, our county recorder looked at the, what they call the canvas, and, and said, you know, well, what happened? And they determined that a very high, um, number of people went to the polls on Election Day to cast their vote, um, but they had received an early ballot. And since, you know, you can't have two ballots out there, and they needed to make sure that this, that the individuals weren't voting twice, those people had to cast the provisional ballot. And that caused, um, three things to happen. One, it caused lines at some of the polling places. Um, two, it caused, um, the, the results to be delayed by, uh, fifteen days. And, uh, people didn't like that. And, um, the first thing is it caused, um, complete anger from the folks that showed up to vote and were told, well, you can't cast the regular ballot, you're on this list. And something kept coming up over and over, and that was people were on an early voting list, permanent early voting list, but they didn't realize they were on it. And so I happen to love the permanent early voting list. I don't know when you vote, um, I, I check that box, and I never have to worry about it, and every time there's an election, I get my ballot, and I like it, and I get to vote in privacy and mail it in. There are thousands of people in our state who are on that list and don't know they're on it. And right now, um, the law says that the only way they can get off that list is for, um, you to submit a letter in writing to the county recorder. Now, if you're moving, um, out of state, or you're, um, transferring, or, or whatever happens in your life, generally, it's the last thing you think about. Oh, I've gotta contact that county recorder and get myself off the permanent early voting list. So we have a lot of people on this list that either don't wish to be there, don't know they're there, or in many cases, don't live in our state anymore. So we would like to try to clean up that list, and, and that too is one of my bills, and, and caused a little bit of, uh, a little bit of angst with some communities who feel they're being, um, targeted. I will mention, one thing I thought was very interesting was our Maricopa County Elections Director said that there is one point two million people in Maricopa County on that permanent early voting list, and the bill that I'm running would affect about twenty-five thousand of them. And the majority of them live in District Twenty Three, which is, as you know, our district. So, I thought, well, there certainly, uh, didn't seem to me like I was trying to disenfranchise folks in other parts of Phoenix. But, um, anyways, so just a couple of things that we've heard from your residents, especially on election issues. They didn't like the lines, they didn't like having to wait, um, for, for a couple of weeks for the results. Um, we've got issues with petition circulators out there. One of your, um, constituents actually went, did quite a bit of research, and he did research on, um, three different elections, and, uh, two of the, the folks that are up here. Um, he checked all your petitions, and he also checked a senator who was, a senator who was recalled, and, um, found all sorts of discrepancies on how these petition circulators were collecting signatures. And so, that's another issue that we're tackling, is these companies bust people in for these big elections and drop them off in, and generally in Maricopa County or Pima County. And, uh, these folks, um, sometimes their, their address is the Bassett's parking lot, that seems to be the most, uh, frequent address we see, which is five 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 North Seventh Street. Um, a lot of people seem to use that. Um, people have also crossed off the backs of ballots and written in, instead of what county do you live in, they've crossed it out and, and written in LA. Um, well, what does that mean for you? What does that mean for your citizens? Uh, what that means is anyone who signed the front of that petition has been completely disenfranchised because their signatures are tossed out. So we really wanna kind of rope these guys in and make sure they're following our law, so that these things don't get thrown out in court. I think that voting is something that should happen with the people, um, and not between judges and attorneys a couple hours before the ballots are printed, which is what we saw a lot in twenty twelve. So, um, also have a little thing called the TPT bill down there. That's not my bill. Um, but, don't, you know, no tomatoes tonight. Um, this is a timely meeting because, um, we were, we did discuss that bill in the Finance Committee in the Senate, of which I happened to, to sit on that committee. Um, it was a real exciting meeting. We did the, uh, sales tax, the TPT bill, and, uh, pension reform, loads of fun. But, um, there are obviously, as you know, issues with the cities, and we really need to watch, especially smaller towns like yours, because you could lose quite a bit of money. Um, I will say that I am disappointed that that bill got removed from Representative Kavanaugh's committee, or they kind of went around him, because he was working, um, with the cities, and with my understanding, he kind of had, um, some agreements in the works and some different, um, ideas that were being floated around that were going to, I think, that make some of the cities, especially the smaller ones, more comfortable. Um, however, um, it ended up in the Senate, and, um, and we heard it, and we made some suggestions, and it's my hope that they now confer with Representative Kavanaugh and others in the House to, um, get amendments ready before it goes to the floor. And I think the committee members, myself included, made that very clear. I was asked today whether I'm on the side of the cities or, um, the side of the businesses, and I thought about that for a second, and my answer was, was pretty simple. It was, I'm on the side of the people, the taxpayers, on this, and I think we need to have some good numbers to see how the taxpayers are going to be affected, because if it affects your coffers, if it affects our coffers, that ultimately affects our citizens. And so I kind of wish to get away from the business versus city argument that's going on, and really look at what's best, I think, for our constituents. And if we focus on that, I think we're sure to make some, some better decisions. So, um, I'm available for questions. I'm not sure how you'd like to do this, if you wanna ask me questions, or if the public asks questions, or how that works.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming out, we appreciate it.
We do.
I know I see you a lot in Fountain Hills, uh, and...
Wish I lived out here.
Appreciate your, um, update on the TPT. Um, I've been working with the other mayors diligently on that, as you know. Um, but I do have a question. Um, a lot of the seniors in relation to ballots, this is a question that I get a lot, is, um, my signature has changed on when I send it in, how do I know that my ballot was counted?
That's a great question, um, Mayor, and I will, um, can answer that, because that actually came up in committee, and they asked the county recorder that question. They, um, have individuals actually look at the signature on the envelope, and then the signature that they have on the computer, which, since it's a driver's license signature, could be quite old. If, you know, with some of us, you know, my driver's license is until, you know, uh, twenty thirty, so, um, I assume my signature will change by then. If there isn't, um, a match, or if it doesn't look quite right, it gets sent through several different people, um, all the way to, they have handwriting experts to see if things have changed. Um, I was kind of surprised by that. And then if they do not accept that ballot, they tell, they call and contact the voter and give them a chance. So if, I guess if, if you've turned your ballot in and you don't hear from them, then your ballot has counted. Um, you know, all those ballots are numbered, by the way. They know exactly how many go out, and they're able to, when they come back, um, see exactly where they're... It's fascinating. I didn't know any of this before they started carrying this committee. Um, but yes, so those, in that case, um, if the person isn't contacted, their ballot has been cast.
That's great. That's reassuring.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions for the Senator? Uh, Councilman Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Michelle, uh, Ms. Reagan, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you for representing the Senator. Just a quick question for you, you know, as you stated, we've all here, have been following TPT pretty closely, and it's been quite interesting the way it's been changing, and it's my understanding, and based on what you stated today, that there was, there was a vote in the Senate Finance Committee, uh, six one vote, and there was, uh, an amendment or so. Um, without getting too down and dirty with it, could you kind of summarize where we're at with this? Because it's, it's, particularly with the amendment, it's, it's somewhat confusing in terms of what the implications are, i.e. allowing, uh, the towns or cities to, to tax, but it doesn't say specifically how or why, or, you get what I'm...
I do get what you're saying. Yes, um, Mayor and Councilmen, first of all, it got even more confusing than what you just mentioned yesterday, because the amendment that was prepared in committee was prepared improperly, and we had to make a decision whether to put on an amendment that was completely messed up, or, um, not be one at all. So that, that was a little touchy yesterday. Um, we ended up passing it with the, it's very, very strict agreement that there was gonna be major changes made, um, on the floor. And what's interesting is, let me just kind of fast forward a little bit, so that you can kind of get the process. Before that bill goes to the floor, it has to go through our caucuses, and when it goes through the Republican Caucus and the Democrat Caucus, staff not only explains the bill and goes over the proposed changes, but they also read to us, and we specifically asked, what were committee members' comments? What was the general feeling? Because when you look at something that has the six to one vote, you say, oh, that's insanely, right? It must be perfect. So there's a big difference between something that is a, a six to one vote, where every member said, big problems, guys, we want you to keep working on this. Um, in fact, to, you know, let's just throw it on the table, we have to work on this, as this is the governor's, her baby, I mean, she's got two, two babies, and this is one of them this year, so we really can't thumb our noses and say, well, we're not, you know, we're gonna do it next year. I mean, we, we would, uh, that wouldn't go over well with her. Um, so, that being said, we know we have to work on it and to keep it moving, but those comments now will be read at caucus meetings, and that signals to all the other members who aren't on the Finance Committee. You know, hey, by the way, there's major changes coming, pay attention, and this isn't all hunky dory, as the six one vote says. So that being said, we see, um, that the majority of the, the tax bill that's proposed, that the governor's proposed, I mean, I think eighty-five, ninety percent of it, we could all agree on, it's good stuff. So my first thought was, well, the one part that seems to be the sticking point is the TPT and the audit provision. So why, why don't we take that piece off and do the rest of it? I mean, if we can't have, can't have a whole pie, why not have three quarters of the pie? It's better than no pie at all. Um, that logic hasn't seemed to, to, to quite prevail yet, but I'm wondering if, if the cities continue to, um, show how they're going to be negatively affected, I wonder if that wouldn't be the end result. Um, the biggest thing right now is that we get numbers, and a number of your mayors, a number of mayors were down there yesterday testifying the discrepancy in the numbers that we've received. Um, oh, let me give an example, oh, this town's gonna lose ten million. Oh, no, they're not, they're gonna lose eighty million. That's a big difference, as you know. So, you know, so one of the things too that is going to be very important is that we get some hard, good numbers that we can actually rely on. Um, and I would also think that, from a business perspective, the auditing provision is, um, sticky. Uh, no business wants to be audited by the state and by cities, and you think we could, could agree on that, but you, you folks probably don't wanna give up your audit privileges. I know, um, Councilman Elke and I discussed this too, uh, that, you know, you want to still have that hammer to hold over people. Um, so how do you not undo a, affects businesses, but still be able to, to watch what's going on? How do you work with EOR instead of against EOR, the Department of Revenue? And I think that's a very big discussion that hasn't really happened yet. I haven't heard anybody, I, I've heard it's Department of Revenue or the cities, but I've not, I haven't heard of a collaboration where that would be one audit on a business. Um, that actually, I believe, was something that Representative Kavanaugh had almost worked out, and so I would really like the House now to be able to weigh in, and that's the beauty of legislation, because they are gonna get a chance to weigh in, and they most likely will change whatever we send over. So, um, we don't expect to finish up anytime soon, unfortunately. I'd see if you posted though, if you, if you'd like, I'd give you my email address and let you know what's going on.
Senator, I appreciate it, um, you know, I'm, I'm less concerned about the audit and more concerned about the, the actual construction sales tax, uh, at, at point of sale, and as we, as we know, we do not have, um, uh, home depots, so forth and so on, so we, we're in a position where we will lose a significant amount of, of revenue. And that's the piece that's somewhat confusing, uh, in terms of what the amendment was, was today. So, we, we don't have to elaborate on it this evening, and, and we can certainly talk offline, so I appreciate you being here.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to talk to you about that anytime, and I know just enough about it to be dangerous right now, but willing to learn with you.
As be most of us.
It's a big deal.
As be most of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Senator Elke? Senator, thank you for, uh, coming out again.
You're welcome.
I think I saw you, uh, not too long ago, maybe three or four months ago, maybe a little bit longer that you came out, so...
Yeah, I think it's a little longer. I actually have my pin at the office. I wear it.
Well, no, I think it was, uh, shortly after the election that you came out, I think you're, you're in town, so thank you for coming out again so soon and giving us an update on this. And as Councilmember Legay, um, indicated, with our town relying, you know, so heavily on sales tax and state shared revenues, uh, losing the TPT would have a significant impact on our town and our ability to pay for the services that we need to pay for, so we certainly appreciate your support and, and you representing the constituents of Fountain Hills in, in that regard. Um, with respect to any amendments, um, I, I've heard different things, and it doesn't sound like anything has passed out yet. For me, specifically, I'm not, certainly not speaking for the council or the, or the town, because we haven't come, come to an agreement, come to speak myself. If there was an amendment that somehow allowed the cities and towns to tax on top of that, I, I personally would not feel comfortable with that, because it would then be putting the towns in a position where we're passing a new tax when the state's taking these revenues, or shifting the revenues, I should say, not taking it. So that would not feel too comfortable, but hopefully that we're able to work out some kind of a compromise, and...
Well, I certainly don't wanna open up, Mayor and Councilman, I certainly don't wanna open up a hornet's nest here, but I would like a little bit of direction from you. If it comes down to in negotiations, um, where, if there's a compromise that can be made in this, in, in these cities, you get one or the other. You get the TPT tax, or you get the audit privileges. I, as a, as, I was, if I was on the City Council, and I'm certainly not, but if I was, I would say, well, heck, I'd pick the TPT, and, you know, forget about the auditing stuff, we'll give that up. Um, I'm curious, and I'm not gonna hold you to this, but I'm curious if that's your philosophy, because surprisingly, that doesn't seem to be the philosophy from some City Council or in-town council members. It just keeps saying, well, we want both. Well, okay, but what if you can't have both? Which one would you rather have? And, um, that's something you may feel more comfortable telling me privately, um, but...
TPT.
Well, see, then, great minds think alike, didn't they? And I, I'm, I'm glad that you're, you have a very reasonable, um, town council, because I was surprised that some of the cities, um, that the council members were not, could not even discuss that, so, anyway. Like I said, I won't, I won't hold that to you, that was not an official vote, so...
Well, also, you know, the mayors, we've been working with the League also, and Ken Strobeck has pretty much been, um, uh, getting the consensus together as to, and you know, there was the press conference yesterday, so, um, there, there will be a lot coming out, I think more from his office, since he's been in on all the meetings with the mayors, which you haven't been, but some of the other legislators have, they probably haven't passed that along to you.
Yeah, um, and Mayor, like I mentioned, uh, that ending up in our Finance Committee at the eleventh hour was a complete surprise, um, so we...
Did we all start?
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people, so, um, yeah, so it was, it was a lot to, to digest and digest quickly, um, but that isn't the way that the legislation should be made. It should be slow, and, and it will be slowed up a bit. If I may be so bold as to make a suggestion, you mentioned the League of Cities and Towns and, and on ten.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're the mayor, you guys are the town council, I think it's important that you direct them where you'd like to see some of these negotiations go. And you, you may be doing that, but so often, the League comes down and they say, well, the League wants this, and then I find out from perhaps you or Scottsdale City Council members that, well, that's not exactly the case. And so I think it's really important that you, as a body, direct the League in these negotiations, because, you know, every town's different, and you have unique things out here that you need. Um, and I know you're a good voice, but stick on them, don't, don't let them go down there and throw you guys under the bus just because you're little.
The, the great thing is that small and big cities have been agreeing. Phoenix is with us, Scottsdale's with us, Mesa, so it's not the little towns against the big cities in this, it's been a great unified effort. And so the League knows that, and they've been pretty much, um, we're, we're, we're pretty much in agreement on, on all the issues, so we've just been taking notes.
Great, that's good to hear. That, that, I'm very happy to hear.
Mayor?
Uh, uh, Councilman Brown?
Uh, thank you very much. I'd like to weigh in on this conversation, please. So, welcome to Fountain Hills, I'm sorry I'm not there. I am a general contractor, and I can, I can tell you that I've said, and I will say again, that it would be criminal to take the tax away, the TPT tax away from the town, such as Fountain Hills. And on the other hand, I have also been through two audits in the last fifteen years that the state pulled, and I can tell you that both of the audits were so flawed that they actually sent me a, a bill for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and I handed it back to my CPA, and had him put a letter with it and told him that they'd be writing me a check, and at the end of the day, they did. So I have zero faith in, in our state bringing even a, even a small audit on, as they did on my business. So, from a general contractor's state, I would, I would let TPT on, but for what it would do to, I'm saying, let's leave it alone. And once again, thank you for coming to Fountain Hills.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Dickey? Thank you. Welcome, Senator.
Good to see you.
Um, the, uh, House Committee, I think it was Legay or something, uh, that, that also, I think it was actually unanimous, but they all said the same thing like you were saying. But if it comes to the floor looking like this, I won't have the support. So it sounds like that's kind of what happened in Finance today. Another que- question about something happened today, since you're here. Uh, fourteen oh three, United Nations Rio Declaration of Prohibition passed in therapy today, and I was wondering what your interpretation of the ramifications of that bill, the, you know, real time, you know, what, what would happen to a, to a city and even a state, um, with that bill? As I'm wondering, because it, it's, it's a little bit hard to tell in real life what that would do.
Yes. Well, thank you, Mayor, and, um, Councilwoman. Uh, to be quite blunt, that, that bill's been pretty gutted from its original form. Um, what is left is a lot of flowery language, and it, and it reads, um, it's an interesting read. It was very important to me before I voted, I voted yes on that, was very important to me, um, to make sure that it didn't have unintended consequences, and we did get, um, sign off on that from all of the, um, major chambers of commerce groups that reviewed it, made changes, and, um, approved that final language, that it wasn't going to have an effect, um, a negative effect on any of their businesses. And that was what was most important to me, to get what, um, you know, sometimes we may on the state level pass things that sound great, and they ended up, they end up having a lot of negative or unintended consequences, or sometimes you pass things that might sound goofy. Um, but, again, um, that bill, um, as far as I've heard from chamber officials around the state, um, will not have an effect on the, the functions of businesses in your community or of you as a council.
Mayor, just to follow, the, um, businesses, I understand at heart, but do you, do you see that it would ever have an effect, like say, if we wanted to go with, um, um, a fleet of cars that use natural gas, or that were electric, or something like that? Because it appears to prohibit any, uh, city or town, and, uh, and if you don't know right now, that's fine, um, but it, it looks like it's prohibiting a really a lot of, uh, actions that towns could take. For, you know, just for example, if we decided, okay, next time we get a car, we'll need, why don't we go with natural gas, or electric, or something? Do you think it would ever have that sort of real life effect on policies that we might make?
Um, Mayor and Councilwoman, I sure hope not. Um, I will be happy to, to check that language for you and get back to you on that, um, perhaps when you could share it with the rest of the council members. Again, when we have bills like this that are very broad and, um, are, um, are sometimes statements, and, and it's very important that we look and see exactly what it is affecting. And, um, I will second see, the cities did not weigh in as, they're opposed, but with the amendment, were they opposed?
Um, Mayor, sorry, I just have in front of me that they were opposed, I just printed it out right before I came in here, so it looks like they are.
I'd be, I, Mayor and Councilwoman, I'd be happy to check, um...
But it looks like it's prohibiting a really a lot of actions that towns could take. For, you know, just for example, if we decided, okay, next time we get a car, we'll need, why don't we go with natural gas or electric or something? Do you think it would ever have that sort of real life effect on policies that we might make?
Um, Mayor and Councilwoman, I sure hope not. I will be happy to check that language for you and get back to you on that. Perhaps then you could share it with the rest of the council members. Again, when we have bills like this that are very broad and are sometimes statements, it's very important that we look and see exactly what it is affecting. And I will second see, the cities did not weigh in as, they're opposed, but with the amendment, were they opposed?
Um, Mayor, sorry, I just have in front of me that they were opposed. I just printed it out right before I came in here. So, it looks like they are.
I'd be, Mayor and Councilwoman, I'd be happy to check. It was my understanding that there was no major opposition once that amendment got placed on it, which, as I mentioned, removed several pieces of that bill. But of all the bills down there, I find that interesting. That's the one you asked about.
Yeah, just to follow up a minute, please. Once again, Senator, thanks for being here. You kind of put out a question to us or an observation. And as a council, there are times when we agree on, you know, all things, you know, times when we don't agree on all things. And I just want to point out that I believe it's fair to say that we are, as a council, unified with respect to and opposed to the, what's being proposed by the governor. And I just want to make something relatively clear. Is that of the ten proposals that came from the governor's task force, as you stated, most of them were right on. And we were definitely on board with seven out of the ten. And the audit in two occasions was the issue. But the big one, the big answer, of course, is the TPT. So, I just want to point that out. And in terms of correspondence, under the direction of our town manager, he has sent that correspondence to our representatives. He has sent that correspondence to the governor. So, we in fact have weighed in as a city. And I think it's fair to say that we've been unified, not to mention all the follow up that the mayor's been engaged in and working with other mayors. So, once again, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I did receive a letter from the mayor yesterday, actually.
And thank you for my letter. Appreciate it. Well, I know you probably got hit with a lot of questions that weren't in your committee. And as I know, when.
I learn as I go along.
I know. Sometimes somebody will walk up to John and they'll say, you know, are you in favor of H B, da-da-da? And, you know, there's so many numbers and so many bills out there that I know you concentrate on your committee besides trying to know anything else that's going on. So, we really appreciate you coming here. I know that you live in Scottsdale, but you do spend a lot of time here in Fountain Hills visiting us.
My mom and dad just live right over the hills, so.
Uh-huh. And I know we see you always here and you always share at our meetings. And you join us here in Fountain Hills quite a lot and you represent us very well. So, thank you very much for coming.
It's been very nice to be here. I appreciate it.
All right.
Appreciate being here.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, next up is, and Senator Reagan left cards. If anybody would like to take their business card for future contacts, we've got business cards for everyone. Presentation by the mayor of the county sheriff's posse with a report on their funding. Hi, there, Jeff.
Pleasure, pleasure. I know that I've had the pleasure to meet many of you, but if I haven't, hopefully we can do that at another time. Excuse me if my hair's a little upset. I just did a ten hour shift doing patrols, doing the parks and the schools and so forth. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and go over the breakdown as to the fifteen thousand dollars that was allotted to us last year. Fountain Hills Posse believes that it's very important to be able to document funds that are entrusted to us. So, I believe everybody has a copy of our breakdown. And it's pretty simple and I won't bore everybody, but I want to show just what that fifteen thousand dollars does go for. And like I had mentioned, it goes for the school patrols, which we have two to four posse members doing five and a half hours each, Monday through Friday. We have now incorporated the park patrols. We're also doing the business watches and the vacation watches. One of our main functions out here as well is supporting the sheriff's office, the deputies when it comes to traffic, crime scenes, any function that we can be called out to, that is what we do. We come out and assist. On the first page that I want to go over is how many hours does the Fountain Hills Posse put in per year? And not to bore you with all of these numbers, I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to look at them. In two thousand twelve, we gave ten thousand four hundred hours. That's from twenty-one members who I must say are extremely dedicated and enjoy serving this community. All of those hours come in in the form of, like I had said, the school patrols and all of the other areas that I had mentioned to you. We are called out at every hour of the day, night. We are family men. We are husbands, wives. I have two kids. And this is what we do. This is what we signed up for and we enjoy doing this. But the reason why I say that is because I want to emphasize the dedication that these twenty-one members have for this town and we enjoy doing this. Okay? Does anybody have any questions concerning the numbers page or?
No, except that numbers are very impressive. And I've seen you everywhere lately at the school. Thank you for that.
Good. You're very welcome. We want to keep this simple and we have a very unique program with the town as far as how the funds are allocated to us. And we really appreciate it this way because it holds us accountable. And like I said before, accountability is key with us. As I had mentioned, we received fifteen thousand dollars. And how this works is when we do need a repair on a vehicle, and as you can see, most of the, all of the money's allotted to this, it's for the maintenance of our vehicles. We have five patrol units. And what we do is we go out and we vent various places. We like to keep it in town, just, I'd like to say that, and keep the business here locally. But whenever a expenditure comes in, we inform the town and funds are allocated for that. So, everybody understands we don't receive a lump sum. We are able to manage it piece by piece. And it gives a breakdown. We tried to make this as simple as possible per unit. And we detail to the T, you know, what it's for, on what date, and the amount. So, we're very cognizant as to how this money is being spent because we know that we're going to be standing before you and asking to continue the program. And, but we also understand that we have to be able to justify it. And I think with both of these pieces of information that I presented to you, unless there's issues that you find that you would like to see improved on, and we'll definitely do that. But I think it's pretty accurate as to how we function with those funds.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Elke?
Commander, thanks for coming out this evening.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Tough question for you, just a couple of the items that are on there. What are code three lights?
Code three lights are the red and blues that you'll see on top of the squad cars.
Okay. And those are used for posse when they're responding to calls? Is that correct?
Correct. Not necessarily when we're responding. It's, for example, when we are in a accident situation, we want to have the brightest lights we possibly can. And we have those flashing.
What are the conditions of all, it's like six vehicles, I guess that includes the golf carts.
Correct.
What's the current condition of all the vehicles since all these repairs have been made?
As you can see, we have put a lot of time into the upkeep just recently. All of the vehicles are in excellent shape. I will tell you this, though, that two of the vehicles are now starting to come into what the county calls a red line, which means you're going to pull it out of service. Well, we, because we take care of our cars more than others, we're able to squeeze as many miles as we can out of these vehicles. But to answer your question, two of the vehicles are, I would say within the next year, we're going to hopefully want to turn them over.
You'll get replacements for those?
Hopefully, hopefully.
Well, let's not put too much money into those two, huh?
Well, exactly, exactly.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for all the hours you've put in. I know I see you guys everywhere lately, especially at the school. I know I talked to the school superintendent and the principal of the charter school and they're both very happy that you're there patrolling.
We just received a really nice letter from the charter school and that's what keeps us going. We appreciate that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up is an update by Jimmy Keye, Vice President of Corporate Services, and Tom Broderick, Director of Rates, regarding Epcore, Chaparral City Water and anticipated rate application. Hi, welcome.
Councilman, or Councilwoman, my name is Jimmy Keye. I'm with Epcore. And I came here tonight just to give you a brief update on where we're at and let you know. Thank you very much. We're looking at filing a rate application. So, part of our mandate is to come out and let everyone know what we're planning on doing. We want you to hear from us first. We don't want you to hear about it in the paper after it's already filed. So, this is a very brief update and.
Sorry about that. So, really, I did indicate that we want to get out and we want to tell everybody what our plans are. We came out to the community last year and we talked about a construction project that we had in mind that we had to do related to one of our wells and installing arsenic treatment. And part of the reason for wanting to get out and converse with everyone and let you know about our plans is that we do want to be a premier provider of safe, reliable, high-quality water and wastewater services. And we've just entered into the southwest United States a couple of years ago. And we want to do that in this area. We are a company that places a lot of importance on our employees and their ability to come to work, work safe, and go home at the end of the workday in the same condition that they arrived in the morning. And so, our safety is a highly valued attribute. We're a company committed to and involved in the communities in which we serve. And we're also committed to environmental stewardship. And we're also a company that strives to deliver best-in-class service and products to our customers, shareholders, and partners. We acquired Chaparral City Water Company from American States in June of two thousand eleven. It was our first U.S. acquisition and it was then followed by the acquisition of American Water, who had about thirteen water wastewater districts in the state of Arizona. We acquired the American Water District in February of last year, in February of two thousand twelve. We're headquartered in Phoenix and we serve approximately one hundred and ninety-three thousand customers across Arizona and New Mexico. Just a quick slide on Fountain Hills. Chaparral City Water Company delivers water or serves approximately thirteen thousand six hundred customers. We deliver about three million gallons during the winter months and about, it doubles to about six million gallons in the summer months, and that's per day. We have one surface water treatment plant that treats tap, that's the Central Arizona Project water, comes down the canal. That's up on Shea Boulevard. We have two groundwater wells, but only one is in service, eight storage tanks and reservoirs and eight pump stations. So, I want to just talk briefly about the rate case application. So, the current water and the water service rates in Fountain Hills have been in effect since October two thousand nine. And they're based on a two thousand six test year. So, I just want to stop there for a moment because if you recall, there was a small increase in two thousand eleven. And to really understand what I'm talking about here, I wanted to let you know that an application similar to the one we planned to file was filed in two thousand seven. And it takes, it took approximately two years for that application to work its way through the system and for the rate to actually be implemented in two thousand and nine. And then there was an outstanding issue related to that application and that was with American States. And that issue never got resolved until two thousand eleven. And there was a small rate increase resulting from that. But in all, overall, it was based on two thousand six costs. And as you know, costs have increased quite a bit since two thousand six. The operating costs such as electricity, purchased water, and labor have all increased. And we've made capital investments in the system to maintain our infrastructure. And in fact, we've seen instances of infrastructure disrepair that we've had to get out and actually make those repairs. We've also had to meet new federal guidelines around arsenic and we anticipate a new guideline out very soon on total trihalomethane. So, the, what is next? We've come forward. We've let you know that we intend to file the application. We've had two customer meetings here in Fountain Hills. The latest one was on Tuesday of this week and we held one in the evening of last week. I think it was Tuesday as well. So, we filed that notice of intention to file on February fifteenth. We would like to get the rate case before the ACC. We've got it in the slide, April first. Probably be sometime in April, but April first would be the earliest it would get there. There would be a period of about six months where ACC staff,鲁co, and other interveners, and that could include the town if you so choose to do so, to ask questions and get responses from the company. We would provide those responses the next month. And then we're hopeful that we may be able to reach a settlement as opposed to go through a hearing situation. That said, it would be about eight months. If we have to go through a hearing, we would anticipate that it would probably be ten months before the administrative law judge could issue a recommended opinion and order. And that would be dealt with by the commission itself, probably in about twelve months' time. So, if the application was filed on April the first, it would take until next March of two thousand fourteen before you'd see any bill impact. So, that was the main body of my presentation. I don't have a lot of details yet because we are working on it. And every day, rates can go up or the rate can come down. I do want to say that we plan on coming forward. We plan to come back out into the community in May, once the application is filed, to again speak with the community members and let them know the exact details of the application.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming out. And I want to thank you for your representative meeting with me first to discuss this, anticipating that I would probably get some phone calls as soon as you started making this public. I was at the first open house. I couldn't be at the second. I know you got hit with quite a few questions from our residents and you had some good answers for them. They were very pleased that you were able to pretty much give them an idea. I think the big question was about what is this going to cost me? That's what they really wanted to know because sometimes the percentage sounds more than what it is. So, I believe you did have kind of an answer for that?
Yeah, we provided an answer based upon what we felt was a range at the time. And about three quarters of the people in Fountain Hills have three-quarter inch smears and they take an average of about seventy-eight hundred gallons per month. And on that basis, the rate increase could range anywhere from seven dollars and fifty cents a month to approximately fifteen dollars a month.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask at this time? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming out. And I also want to thank your representative, Rebecca. Is she here? Yes, she is. I had brought up some issues with Rebecca and she got back to me very quickly with some answers on that. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much.
With that, we go to call to the public. Do we have anyone from the audience?
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards. Gina Galacini followed by Peter Cordell.
And this is a portion of the meeting where anyone can come up and speak about anything that's not on the agenda. But unfortunately, we can take notes, but we're not allowed to respond, just so everybody understands that if you don't know how it works. Hi, Gina.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, I'm Gina Galacini and I'm a nine-year town resident. I'm speaking to raise a. I'm speaking to raise awareness regarding the town's adopted project called Fountain Hills Interconnected Trails, or FIT. It consists of twelve in-town trails that will act as a recreational amenity. But few residents realize the negative consequences under the federal government's sustainability policies. One example, bus systems usually get implemented along trail routes. Valley Metro, as you know, is offering the town incentives right now. Upon, but my concern is, you know, upon trail completion, HUD, the DOP, and the EPA start their partnership agreements with the town. So non-binding Agenda Twenty-One recommendations are implemented through these agencies and translated into law via regulations. One example is changes to local codes and ordinances. Eminent Domain is another tool used by the government to bring their communities into compliance with the sustainable community's vision. Trail routes enable rezoning from misdevelopment with federal oversight of course. Funding is directed to specific areas such as a neighborhood or possibly slipside development and with the soon-to-be completed Fountain Park Trails. What exactly is at risk here with these Agenda Twenty-One recommendations coming into play? Governments may condemn and seize private property and then give or sell it to another private owner who promises to use the property in a way that satisfies the government's vision. Asphalt is clearly taking a backseat. The urban trail development proposed budget is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is pennies compared to the risks to property owners with these urban trails on behalf of sustainability policies. The FIT Trails Project was covertly pushed into our community by our former town manager, Rick Davis, and is implemented currently through our current town manager, Ken Buchanan. Both members of the International City, International County and City Management Association, ICMA.org. You believe in strong government, central government initiatives and strong government, sorry. I just have one rule. As a citizen of this town, I insist that expenditures for the FIT project be immediately stopped until you fully understand the process and regulations of Agenda Twenty-One. I'd like to present, uh, Mayor Kavanaugh with an article entitled, which can also be found on the internet, "The History of Sustainable Development: Connecting the Dots." Thank you very much.
Thank you Gina. Hi Gina.
Hi guys. Uh, I'm Peter Porteau. I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for, I think, over twenty years now. I'm also, among other things, a small business owner. Um, we just opened, as you know, Sidewinder Cycles here in town. And I wanted to share something pretty cool, which you guys were up to coming up. As many of you know, hopefully all of you know, uh, Arizona Bike Week twenty, uh, thirteen is coming up in April, in just a couple of weeks. And this year, we are honored and privileged to be able to participate in a very cool charity, uh, event. So, um, on April thirteenth, Saturday, it's the same weekend that Cyclovia is going on, um, we are also going to be proud sponsors of an event called Saddle Up for Kids. So this has now become an annual, uh, ride. And, uh, the point of the ride is to raise money for an entity called, um, Camp Courage. Camp Courage is an entity that works with children that have been severely burned and disfigured and helps them rehabilitate and deal with life situations and, uh, completely funded by private donations. So, um, we are expecting up to, and hopefully more than, a thousand motorcycle riders coming on a short route into Fountain Hills from Shea Boulevard down to Colony Drive. Each one of those thousand-plus motorcycle riders, uh, will see our beautiful town, will hopefully buy some gasoline, some food, and then come back and, uh, hang out with their families. And more importantly, each one of those riders will be donating thirty-five dollars towards this charity. So all in, we hope to raise close to fifty thousand dollars on this one day for Camp Courage. So again, it's called Saddle Up for Kids. Uh, the main sponsors are Hogs United Charities. And, uh, we're really privileged and excited to be part of this, and I just wanna let you know. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. Is that a, uh, is that a col- col- no, that later, okay. Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda. Consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from March seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Paul Olin Hacks, representing Fearless Titty Rescue for the purpose of a fundraiser scheduled to be held on April fifth from six to eight P.M. Consideration of approving resolution two thousand and thirteen dash seventeen, abandoning whatever rights, title, or interest the town has in portions of the certain published utility and drainage easements located at one five nine five one East El Lago Boulevard. Consideration of approving resolution two thousand and thirteen fourteen, approving the third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Superior Board of Arizona in Maricopa County for jury management services. And I have a motion to...
Yes, I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Do we have a speaker card?
No, ma'am.
No? Then, um, you will call.
Councilmember Dixon?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Hi.
Councilmember Loise Jay?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Hi.
Councilmember Yeats?
Hi.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Fearless Titty people, thanks for coming. Bye. Okay. We'll start with our regular agenda items. The first is consideration of approving a booking policy and procedures for the Senior Activity Center.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you know, it's been increased activity at the Community Center, which is, uh, has some increased responsibilities for the senior services and community center staff. Uh, programs offered such as the Parkinson's and, and hearing, uh, support groups, um, are well attended in the programs. And it's caused some increased, uh, policy, um, some booking issues. A committee was formed, um, through the leadership of, of Committee Services Director to, um, work with the senior citizens, uh, Senior Service Advisory Commissioner and, uh, and the Community Center Advisory to, uh, to address the policy. Um, it was recommended that unanimous to the council to adopt the policy, um, from there. So I'd, uh, like to ask the, um, Committee Services Director to briefly explain the policy for the benefit of the council and the public.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, thank you Ken. Um, a- as was explained, uh, this is a process that we started over a year and a half ago. And, uh, it was, uh, basically what I'm gonna share with you briefly are policies and procedures that have been followed at the Community Center. Uh, but we have until now not placed them in paper and asked for approval at the, the council level. And that's what we're asking for this evening. Um, it was also clear that any policies and procedures that we came forward with would not only affect senior services, uh, who was the main driving force behind these, but also the community center and staff as well. So, um, I approached both the, uh, respected chairs of the Community Center Advisory Commission, um, Mr. Bill Mulehauser, and also, um, the respected chair, uh, Tim Judge, from the Senior Services, uh, Advisory Commission. They in turn worked with both Kelly, who joins me this evening, uh, Fondle, as the supervisor of senior services, and, um, Rena Geddy, uh, the event coordinator at the Community Center. Uh, they met for a number of months, did not meet over last summer, uh, but then reconvened, uh, this past fall. Again, continuing to work through those issues. Unfortunately, Mr. Mulehauser was not available, so, uh, the vice chair, uh, Jerry Gurrell, from the Community Advisory Commission, uh, took his place. Uh, what you have in front of you this evening is the culmination of, of all that work by all those individuals. Um, we did take it, uh, twice to both of the respective commissions. And at the, uh, most recent meeting of each of those, uh, they, uh, unanimously expressed their support for what we have in front of you this evening. I'm not gonna go through this in a great deal of detail because I think it kinda speaks for itself. As I said, there is very little in here that's new, uh, with just a couple of exceptions, um, which I'll try to highlight here. And again, as I mentioned, Kelly is joining me this evening in case you have some specific questions that I can't answer. Under the programs, again, much, uh, of that is, is the same as we've been practicing in the past. So there isn't a whole lot new on that one, it's just putting it down onto, to written policies. Uh, probably the, the major change in the support groups had to do with, uh, we increasingly have some of the support groups who are spinning off and doing things like Parkinson's Art Group or some others. Uh, that was putting a, a strain on our resources. And so we basically came to the conclusion that while we're not gonna prohibit additional spinoff, they need to be treated as individual classes and then go through the booking policy or the booking procedure with senior services. And again, uh, both the commissions were supportive of making that change as well. So, uh, and then again, uh, if they were to, uh, be meeting at the Community Center, um, as a spinoff support group, there would be membership required, and half that's not been required, and we didn't feel like that was fair to the residents. So we were seeking that as well. So with that, unless you have any specific questions, um...
Any questions from council?
Ma'am, I mean.
Uh, Councilman Elke, uh, was that, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Um, Mark, it, it appears to me that both committees reviewed it and both committees, uh, excuse me, commissions unanimously voted in favor of this.
Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, Councilmember Loise Jay, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Brown, are you still with us?
I am.
Okay, did, did you have any questions, um, concerning this?
The, the only, I, and I too, realize that both the committees has, uh, or commissions have reviewed this and passed it. And my only comment would be, it would certainly be nice if we could refine this down to oppose to two full sheets of, uh, regulations, maybe one sheet with all the regulations, uh, compiled and condensed.
Uh, Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, Councilmember Brown. I, I think what we tried to do here is, is focus on two different areas. One was specifically on, on programs and how they would be handled. And then the second was specifically on support groups. So we wanted to make sure that that information, and there, there is some duplication here, but we felt like it was important in the process to make sure whether somebody was attending a program or somebody was in fact a member of a support group.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions? Councilman Elke?
Mark, um, thank you for, um, thank you for your presentation. And, um, I, I certainly hope this helps with respect to staff and provides some, some guidance, obviously, for the residents and the support groups, um, so that everybody's on the same page, so to speak. I, I do wanna, just on another note, I wanna, uh, commend, um, the staff over at Community Center and, and senior services as well, and a wonderful job that they've been doing. I know they've been very, very busy over there lately and, uh, the senior, your staff toning over those rooms for, for events, one right after another, so they're, they're doing a phenomenal job with obviously very limited, uh, staff members. So please pass along, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll do that, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Hanson?
Just appreciate the efforts of both commissions and staff in, in working on this. And since it sounds like everybody's in favor, I would move to approve the booking policy and procedures for the Activity Center.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Uh, any other council discussions? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
And a vote? Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consideration of the updated master plan for Four Peaks Park?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, uh, you know, as you know, the master plan, uh, was approved back in, uh, two thousand and one for Four Peaks Park. And at that time, it was, um, a very heavily used park, um, for all the recreation activities that were, uh, and the facilities that were there at the time. Uh, subsequent to that, we've had additional facilities built, um, as I understand it, the, um, the, um, Committee Services is here to present a proposed update to that Four Peaks Master Plan. It is a staff recommendation to approve that update master plan.
Hi Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, in September, staff and our consultant Olson and Associates initiated an update of the Four Peaks Master Plan to better reflect the current use of the park and the future needs of the community. The existing Four Peaks Master Plan, as Ken mentioned, was approved in two thousand and one. Since then, the recreation needs and the user group needs have changed significantly. The elementary school's been closed, the Boys and Girls Club has opened, and the plan is simply no longer relevant. Over the course of the past seven months, three public meetings were held, as well as discussed at two Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. In addition, staff received input from user groups such as Wood League, Tackle Football, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Fountain Hills Unified School District. Updating the master plan is the first step in a long process to make improvements to the park to meet the needs of our residents and user groups. Um, at this time, I'd like to introduce Jeff Kratsky and Randall Topf with Olson and Associates. Um, Olson and Associates has done several projects with the town, but most, the one most similar to this is the Desert Vista Park project that we completed in two thousand and eight. So with that, I'd just like to have Jeff, um, talk briefly about the process that we went through over the past seven months and walk us through the plan so that you guys get a better idea, as well as the general public who hasn't been able to, to see this, to our public meetings or our committee meetings so far. So, Jeff?
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, as Brian indicated, uh, this is, this has actually been, uh, a few proj- well, our third project. I think we've actually worked with, uh, with the town, the resident town, over the years. Uh, and we've had some, just some really exceptional results, um, and, and really responsiveness from the community as a part of making those projects really become reality. And so Four Peaks Park really represents the next, um, challenge and, uh, the development of the master plan. I'm assuming, I think, most of you have had seen the packet, seen the presentation that we're gonna look at here this evening. I'll try to make it relatively brief, there's a lot of details in there. Um, but we, uh, we started the process back, uh, this past fall in September. Basically, it was about a four-month-long master planning process. And, um, if you don't know this, Four Peaks Park is, is really kind of a, a, a hybrid park of sorts in that its, its size is really technically a neighborhood, makes it a neighborhood park. But it's just, it's kind of right between a community-scale park and a neighborhood park. And so that makes it, in my mind, anyway, kind of a hybrid park, which, what does that really mean? It means that, um, some of the things that are, that are currently taking place at Four Peaks, um, you may not, if you wouldn't find in a typical neighborhood park, a smaller neighborhood park. But this one has enough size to it, it's about fourteen acres in size. And so it provides a number of different uses and functions, um, and really appeals to many interests and has historically. And so this master plan really, uh, the intent was, as Brian indicated, to really update and reflect, uh, the time that has passed and some of the context of the project. Um, the school is one of those big ones, a non-functioning school site, um, that once did. And so with this, this park master planning process really is to, um, to, as we indicated, to update this and, uh, and make it more relevant for the future. Um, just some quick facts here on the, um, the background on this. I mentioned that it's a fourteen-acre park, um, very much a, um, almost a community-type park. Sports fields were some of the town's first. Uh, lights were upgraded in nineteen ninety-five. Soccer field, it's, it's out there, was constructed in nineteen ninety-eight by a charity fund, uh, grant. And then, uh, fly football and Little League are primary uses. But when I, when we say that, um, I can tell you that through the public involvement process, so we'll touch on here in just a bit, what we really heard was that Four Peaks through the years has really functioned again in many different ways. And there were a lot of people that came to our meeting that really simply used the park more for more passive uses, walking, playing with their dog, walking their dog, uh, taking the kids out there, or whatever it might be. But kind of arranged it more what we call passive or semi, semi-passive uses. So there are a number of things that have us heard there, uh, historically. And we would anticipate with moving forward and development of the master plan that a lot of those, those, uh, needs and interests would be there. Real quickly here, I think it's always important, I know you all live here, work here, and, and you know your town very well, but I always find it is helpful to make sure we're all on the same page relative to the context of, in this case, Four Peaks Park, and where it is in your community and relationship to some of your other, um, significant parks and, uh, certainly where we are here this evening. So you're basically up in the northeast, uh, portion of the town with Four Peaks location. Um, obviously, you know the success and the upgrades, uh, through the years with Golden Eagle Park. Um, Brian touched on Desert Vista, which is not on this, uh, this graphic, but truly that's the most recent, um, park project that's been undertaken. Some wonderful facilities out there. And then Fountain Park and the Community Center. So you kind of understand sort of its contextual... So you kind of understand sort of its contextual, uh, uh, standing, its relationship with, uh, other features in the, in the community. Real quickly here, in public involvement, uh, I want to just really emphasize something here. And this is true for not just park projects, but since that's what we're talking about here this evening. Park projects are really community-feel-good kinds of projects. And we typically get quite a bit of, of interest and participation along the way. And Four Peaks, uh, master planning was no different. And Brian mentioned that we had three significant public meetings along the way, back, starting back in September and going all the way through November, where through those series of meetings, we actually started initially with trying to get some of that initial public, uh, input and, uh, what people liked or didn't like about the park, would like to see. And, uh, at the first one, taking it all the way through, then a series of what we call design development steps. Uh, the development of the master plan, bringing back a concept that we could, um, say, based on the input that we got, this is, this is what we heard you say, and, and here's something for you to react to. That was kind of in the middle of the project back in October. And then we brought back a, kind of a preliminary master plan, uh, that was, uh, really responsive to the, uh, additional comments that we received, um, throughout the, uh, throughout the course of the, the master planning process. So a number of opportunities for, uh, people to get involved. You see there a total of thirty-six citizens. And you know, I, I'll, to be honest with you, we would love, as you would, I'm sure, to see hundreds of people, if not more, come out to these meetings. But it's just not very, it's not realistic to, to expect that. And that's in any community, it can be a huge city and it can be a smaller town. Um, so this actually was a pretty, pretty typical turnout, just so you know, from what we, we've experienced. And we do a lot of, personal recreation is a big part of our background and experience. So we're kind of basing my comments on that. And again, we're not going to go through all these. And I, hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at some of the comments that we got through the series of meetings. And, and just a couple of things that I would point out here. Again, I mentioned that we had a variety of interests, everything from passive interest to just, I would like a park that I had more opportunities to walk around or walk through, you know, safely. Everything from that to, we're concerned about some of the vandalism, some of the graffiti, things like that that have happened out at the park historically. Um, we've seen a lot worse, by the way, but this is, but certainly though, when those things are happening, they catch people's eye and certainly the neighbors that are closest to those. Um, so we heard some of those kinds of comments. Um, we, we heard, uh, comments about the bus barn, um, and its, its function or non-function, uh, on the east side of the site. Actually, we had a number of comments on that. And then we had quite a few, um, people that commented on, again, just the need to, and a, and a desire to want to be able to continue to take their dogs, even though it's not a formal dog park, never has been, um, but they still would like the opportunity to be able to just casually run around or play with their dogs. So just as a, a sample of some of the, the things that we heard there. But there were quite a variety of comments, as you can see from that list. So what I want to do is just briefly take you through kind of a tour of the master plan. And, and we, uh, we like to kind of approach this in a way that makes it easier to, to really understand what this picture in front of you really means. And, you know, it's a nice color rendering and all, and there are a number of things that are going on. I just want to quickly give you again a little more site-specific context. Would you like a pointer? Um, well, I guess I can, I think. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman.
Now, if I can just see how to work it, we'll be in, uh, we'll be in good shape. There we go. Okay, so just, I think, a couple of things to make sure that we're, you know, contextually for the site. It's important to, to note that the, the whole northern portion of the site, this area up in here, is, those are existing facilities. And those have been some of the most recent, um, improvements, although it's been a while, a number of years since those were implemented. But those, those facilities up in that northern area, um, are predominantly unchanged as a part of this master plan. So we really, although we certainly evaluated them along the way and considered what those uses were and their relationships with the southern, actually, the two-thirds of the park down to the south, um, but that's important. And then the connectivity via the bridge, uh, that's existing out there now. Um, key features, key elements to be aware of and understand how the connectivity and potential improvements to the master plan, how they relate to those. So then again, I just mentioned that the rest of the park down in here was the majority of what was addressed through the master plan and development of the concepts that were presented to the public, and then the refinements to, um, that area of the park. Um, so this is, we're going to start here. This is the final master plan picture. We're going to work our way through a series of layers of the elements that make up this master plan. And I'll do it relatively quickly, but I think it's a real good way to now take and extract the layers of information and the elements that we heard a lot about through the public involvement process and how it helped us with the development of the, of the park. So here's kind of just the base layer, kind of fully colored render master plan. So that's three circulation. Again, I touched on some of the public comments and then we heard quite a bit about the, um, the need for a more defined trail system, a pathway system throughout the park. As most of you know, other than the northern portion of the park, there really is not a well-defined circulation system with any paving of, of any sort out there and certainly not providing the kind of connectivity that you really would like to achieve, uh, in a park like this. And so at a master plan level, it's very important for us to understand, um, where we can provide those opportunities. And obviously, that happens when we start to look at the relationship of some of the other elements of the park, where, where they should best be sited, and, uh, and then how we can connect those. So this is a very, very important layer, um, as expressed by the community. And I think with any good park master plan and the ultimate implemented park, um, improvement, um, that's one of the biggest things that you can point to to say, you know, were we successful in really creating a cohesive park that people feel good about being able to get around and use the different facilities? Vehicular circulation, obviously, a park, again, at fourteen acres in size, it's not a two-acre park. So it just generates and has generated a lot of use and interest through the years, um, not just by the neighbors. Clearly, we acknowledge through this process that this is predominantly surrounded by, by residential neighborhoods. That's important. But we also know that there are people that come to Four Peaks for other events or other uses. So when you consider all of that, we need to be able to make sure that we have places for people to park and try to. And we always try to achieve in any park of this scale or larger in particular, that there is distributed parking. So rather than putting one big parking lot in and, and saying, okay, now you've got a place to park, now you get to walk to wherever it is you'd like to go. Um, so you will see here, the, uh, our goal to achieve that distributed parking, not just to, to do it in different areas to do it, but to actually niche in those areas of parking where they make sense and provide for that kind of convenient access, um, as you get out of your vehicle and arrive at the park. We'll also recognize again, though, that this has a very much a neighborhood park feel to it in many respects. A lot of people come here and walk to the park. They don't all drive in, in vehicles. And so, um, very, very important, you can see the, the opportunities completely surrounding the park down by the, uh, the elementary school, between that and the Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, and then over, we're recommending some additional, um, parking improvements on the east side of the park there. Um, the existing lot up on the north where those improvements currently exist. And then we're making, uh, a suggestion over on, as part of the master plan, is for the, uh, the, uh, west side of the park there, um, just north of the Boys and Girls Club and what, what will be the, uh, the courts that we'll touch on here in just a bit. Um, okay, so ta- talking about, uh, fields, courts, and amenities. And obviously, you can see by this rendering that this is, this comprises the majority of what happens at the park in terms of its area requirements. So that's everything from the central field that you see there, which is a multi-use field. Can be used for ball field, or excuse me, ball fields and soccer, football practice, a wide range of activities that have occurred there historically. And there still was an interest from the public in seeing those kinds of uses continue. So that's a big portion of the central portion of the park. Um, but then we also have the field to the north, so the complement between providing for opportunities in different scales and different portions of the park by the existing soccer field and then the central field, uh, helps meet some of those needs. Then to talk about some of the court, uh, that we heard some, quite a bit of interest in. Um, I don't know how many of you are pickleball, uh, fans, but, but that was a, we had a number of people that showed up. And it's growing in popularity. Um, Brian and, and Mark, through their day-to-day activities, can tell you that they get a lot of calls and they've earned a lot of interest. We don't see that going away, uh, don't think it's going to be a trend. Um, and so we had a lot of interest in that. So we, we were able to identify an opportunity or loc- location that made a lot of sense over on the eastern portion of the site. And I want to just quickly explain here where you see the two tennis courts and the pickleball courts. Those are replacing the barn location that's existing out there now. And so that has, has gone away as a part of this, this, um, master plan. Um, so then we have courts there, and then down, if we shift over to the west side of the site, we actually have, um, a couple basketball courts. Basketball courts, we hear through a lot of our park master planning and design experiences that, uh, you know, basketball courts, you, you never really get too many of them. Um, but we were able to find a location that made a lot of sense and had a nice relationship, not only with other facilities within the park, but certainly the Boys and Girls Club and, you know, kind of the, the partnership that's there and has been there. Uh, continue to have that, that accessibility and convenience that way. And then down in the southern portion of the site, you can see again, something that's very important to any park, and especially a park of this scale, uh, are the playgrounds. There are playground facilities out there now. This master plan really refined the locations and the types of facilities that should be a part of the plan as you move forward and make improvements in the park. So we're really kind of appealing to a lot of different interests with a lot of these facilities right here in this particular layer of information. Then structures, um, and I won't go through each one of these individually, but you can see kind of the range of, of existing structures on the north there where we have. I want to point out that, and it's very important, because we did have some comments, a, a few comments, not a lot, but a few comments from the public about restrooms. Those are pretty common in, in doing any park master plan. Uh, most people knew that there was an existing restroom facility out there. Um, that's up in the northern portion of the, of the site, we're updating right there. Um, and so again, we've got an existing remada right next to it. Um, and then, uh, the bridge structure that connects the northern portion of the park across Caliente Wash and, uh, with the southern portion of the site. And then if you take kind of a stand around, we've got a, sort of a, uh, a mix of locations, sizes and locations of shade remadas, uh, throughout the, the park. Uh, we also have, um, some shade provided at the court areas, um, basketball courts, um, tennis courts. And then, uh, one of the things that's unique to this master plan that's not out there now is an opportunity for a group remada area, which is located right in here. And this is set up in the master plan to provide a lot of flexibility for how it's implemented, but it can appeal to large groups of, of people for a special event, whether it be competition. We had people ask us about, hey, what about, we have a pickleball competition or a tournament out there as an example. Do we have enough room that's convenient to be able to have a group gathering? And have to shade and some relief that way. So that, uh, was some of the thinking behind the, the location for those. But it's very multifunctional and it has shade remada, uh, kind of the protection elements, uh, in different scales. And those should be implemented, um, uh, through time. Uh, and then again, the, the shade remada is down by the, uh, down by the, uh, the play, uh, structures, the playground areas, um, to sort of round that all out. Vegetation, again, real simply here, what we heard from the public and what we hear from most people on, on any park project is, you know what? It's simple, oh, trees. We just, we want to be able to have more trees, more shade where we can, where it's possible, considering the number of facilities we're also positioning in the park. And so just being able to provide those. Um, and then you can see the, the lighter green there represents not serving any of the, the Caliente Wash, the vegetation, which is very mature, most of it through that whole zone. The plan does not do anything to disturb any of that vegetation. It simply provides another layer of inform- of, of new trees, uh, through time and through implementation. And those are the darker green, uh, circles that you see in the southern portion of the site. And then you put all of those layers together and that brings us back to where we kind of started with, which is the, the completed final master plan. Uh, a lot of things, and one thing I will comment on, maybe just to wrap it up, is that you have to be really careful with the scale of parks this is, fourteen acres, because as I started out by saying, it's a hybrid park between a neighborhood and the community. And with these kinds of parks, it can be very easy to overload as you're working through the development of a master plan. And with any park, you know, as everybody, there are a lot of interests and a lot of needs. I think what we clearly strove to, to do, uh, throughout this process was to really achieve the balance. Try to meet as many of those needs that made sense for the area that we had to work with, the context of the park, the neighbors around the park, and, and really try to, you know, again, did we make one hundred percent of everyone that came to the meeting happy? I'm sure we, we didn't. Uh, and by the way, I do want to mention one thing. I forgot to, I forgot to mention this. We, um, I mentioned that the, the barn, the maintenance barn and all was, was moved from this area to the site. We went through a pretty thorough analysis, uh, and it just included in, input that we got from neighbors, um, especially those that are in the western portion of the site, where we ended up, um, citing a, a maintenance, uh, it's a very small maintenance facility that would be used, um, kind of, uh, not, probably not necessarily on a daily basis, but a few times a week, kind of off and on. Um, not, but again, not a, this is not a fifty or a hundred-acre community park where you have daily operations and all. So we scaled, uh, a facility that would be appropriate for the size of this park to be able to make sure that we at least had a location here that could meet the needs, um, to maintain this kind of a facility. And it ended up being on the western portion, uh, of the park here, which is kind of in this area right here. And what we did, there were some concerns about its location, neighbors obviously across the street in that area. Um, frankly, anywhere we would put it on the site for the most part, other than if it were put right in the middle of the park, um, there would be neighbors across the street. So what we tried to do was bring it in, set it back, if you will, from the edge of the street and away from those, those neighborhood edges as much as we could. And, and we did some additional things as well at a master plan level, conceptually. And I think you've seen in your packet, um, some of the steps that we took to address what this would look like. And we have some very strong 3D modeling that we use, uh, in a lot of ways for the park. And actually, um, want to just quickly give you two shots here. You've seen those, I believe, in your packet as well. But using this kind of software, we were actually able to use it as a tool in a very site-specific facility like the maintenance facility, um, and be able to take a look at that and see, and, and really as close to actually having it built as you can, and see what it would look in three dimension and the steps we could take to really mitigate its, its setback, its visual appearance, uh, and to try to address some of those concerns. And so here was an aerial perspective, looking back from up in the air, kind of to the west, northwest, over Four Peaks Elementary, down into the park. And then kind of rotating around to the Boys and Girls Club and looking more to the north, northeast. Kind of give you a feel, more three-dimensional, even though it's a little ways away. But it gives you a sense of the, the integration of these facilities and the character that you could, could expect. So with that, I know that was a lot of rambling on, but it was, it was months of really a good process. And, uh, we appreciate, um, the opportunity to present. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I just, uh, I think it's very interesting how you, with the layers, made, uh, the whole plan that you look at the first time a lot clearer, it's on this panel. Questions?
Uh, yes, thank you very much for your presentation. Excellent job. Um, I'm, I'm a commercial real estate developer and I know you have to be very cognizant when you develop in a neighborhood versus a commercial district that I want to commend you. People think as soon as you, oh, we're building the park, you've got to do this and this, and I want a swimming pool and four-lee this. And, and we need to remember that this is a neighborhood. And I think you did an excellent job of, of keeping that buffer zone, even on the existing soccer field. If, if people know there, my kids play soccer there. It's a little bit lower and then you automatically have that buffer and you did an excellent job. So that if you are just walking in the neighborhood, you're not drawn in that, it's, it's overpowering. So I want to commend you on that. I think you did a wonderful job. And just remind everybody that a neighborhood park is very different than a commercial park where you may see all these other things that you get these suggestions. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, we have two speaker cards. Um, Councilman, if you want to go first, go ahead.
Mayor, just to go a little bit somewhat useful with things, as we did get some input from some folks. And, um, would you say that the, the former soccer field area is just something that can maybe be something else later on as we move forward? Uh, we obviously don't have, uh, we, we're not really going to be able to go ahead with this anytime really soon. But even beyond that, some of the suggestions that maybe that's the two we're referring to, racquetball or, um, maybe a little bit of a splash park for kids, um, kind of thing. We've kind of got a list of things. And so wondering if, if there's room for that on that, um, existing soccer field.
Uh, are you talking about the north soccer field, just to make sure that we're, let's go back here.
The northeast, I guess you called it.
Well, we can actually, we can just use this image right here. But we're talking on the north, you're talking about that, that soccer field, right? I just want to make sure, are you talking about the central area here, up in the north?
The north.
Okay. Um, let me just say, and actually, I think this will address part of, hopefully, in part, your question. Um, this is a master plan and it's a ma- it's a vision for the, for the future. And the likelihood of being able to implement all of the improvements that are shown in this master plan, for most parks, that's not very realistic and it's set up to be able to give you options. So I would say with respect to, if there, if something surfaced or came forward that became a, a high demand, uh, it was something maybe didn't take place during this, the course of this master plan at all, would there be an opportunity for consideration of that? And clearly, I'm Mark and, and Brian would, they know from their experience with other, with the other parks, that that, that the master plan, having this level of master plan now and having it updated, really now gives them a pretty good sense and a great tool to be able to say, you know what? This is what we have there now and what we need. But we've been hearing an awful lot about this facility and what, whatever.
whatever that might be. So I think, hopefully, that addresses your question. There is a lot of flexibility in a master plan, but you gotta have the master plan to give you the vision and the knowledge to be able to make those kinds of decisions from.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And we have two speaker cards on this. This is Mayor Lawrence Frau, followed by Linda Bordeaux.
Hi, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you. My name is Lawrence Frau. I have lived across the street from this park for twenty-two years of the twenty-six I've been here in Fountain Hills. And I'm glad to see, I'm hoping that you approve this, the investment in what's been and is the oldest neighborhood in this community. It's nice to see the town wanting to put some investment into that neighborhood, because that neighborhood is kind of at the cusp of going either way. So as a property owner, I'm very glad to see that investment, and hoping that this investment will help to stabilize and revitalize that neighborhood. Some of it we are seeing already in some of the homes that are, people are wanting to redo and update their homes, so that's a good thing in this neighborhood. Also wanted to let you know, as the consultant had said, this is a very family-oriented neighborhood. There are a lot of kids in this neighborhood. Even though the schools have been closed now for two years, there are a lot of kids. And he said that it's heavily used. He was saying that it's a flexible park, is that what you call this? A hybrid park. Truly, this is a community park that is located in a neighborhood. It is used heavily by all kinds of groups, all kinds of people, all hours of the day. And so, it really does need to have some investment put into it and updated. So I'm glad to see that I'm here in support of it. It's used by more than just the surrounding neighborhood. It is used by all kinds of groups in this community. Hopefully, it will relieve the pressure on some of the other parks then, as well. And I've been involved, as were my kids involved, both of my boys were involved in the original master plan. And as Brian said, things have changed over the years. The state park is no longer necessary there, which it was there originally, thanks to my boys. So I'm very much in support of the different kinds of uses that have been proposed. I think it's a great balance, and I think it'll help this neighborhood as well as serve the community at large. So please say yes. And I hope to actually see this master plan come to fruition, because we've been waiting a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, town council. I've got a couple of quick questions. I use this park all the time. I live like a block away from there. And it's true, there's a great neighborhood to live in. It's really family-oriented. Everyone knows each other, and it's perfect heavily used. And first question is, upon glancing at the overall view of this, it seems like we're losing a lot of parks in some of the configurations, with the parking lots over by the pickleball and all of that. So I was just wondering, what percentage of the grass areas are we losing out by adding some of these other features in there? The other question I had was, the tennis courts are currently now right behind the Boys and Girls Club, and they're pretty new, and they're in great working condition. So I read the proposal, and it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to construct the two tennis courts over on, off the branchy side near the pickleball courts. What I didn't see in the fundage was, how much is it to destroy the original perfectly good tennis courts to move them down? I get the point about, the basketball courts, of course, are closer to the Boys and Girls, the kids would probably want to play that more, but this course in good state. So I don't know, maybe you want to consider rethinking that or what have you. And as far as the soccer field goes, it's gotten awful lot. And you could see, especially considering how much of, looks to me, I could be wrong, how much grass we're losing, that I don't know that we'd want it to play in the soccer field. We had our first annual Fountain Hills Kickball Tournament there this past weekend, and it was timed with that by all. One of the perks of doing that is that the town will paint that any way you want it. They'll straighten it up as a soccer field, or in our case, a kickball field, so it works out really well. There's one more thing that I wanted to say, and it escapes my memory. Oh, I know what it was. There's some interest in Four Peaks Elementary School for higher education, according to strategic plan. And so I was also interested to know how you would handle parking for that? If you had a viable option of somebody to come in and take over Four Peaks Elementary as a higher education or further education function, what would we do about that parking? So just another thought. Maybe I can get some answers from somebody, or maybe the gentleman can tell me how much it is to lift up this tennis court. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. I think the parking would be a challenge, or something like that. Do you have any answers for possibly the question about the losing the grass areas or the tennis court?
We've had a few user groups express the same concern about the grass. And actually, it's not losing any grass. In fact, we might actually be increasing a little bit. It's just we're changing the configuration, so it kind of looks a little different. But there's plenty of space still there. There's actually more grass over by the playground areas now. And if anybody's been out there in a while, there's a lot of unusable portions of the park. There's some sand volleyball courts over there that probably don't even know are there. They date back to probably the nineteen eighties. So there's a lot of unusable areas. So we're actually shifting some things around. So we're not actually losing any turf, it's just being rearranged. So with regard to the tennis courts, the tennis courts on the, much like our street, was really good on the surface where we redone them or painted over them, but the subsurface asphalt is actually deteriorating. So while we know this project isn't going to happen in the next six months, by the time we are ready to do that, it probably will be at the point where it's not worth actually salvaging those courts, and it's okay to move them over to the other side. So that answers two of the questions. And then we can only hope that the increased parking that we're proposing for this would have an effect on whatever alternative uses that Four Peaks Elementary School gets. And we did take those alternative uses into consideration when we were working on the master plan, whether that's an alternative school, or just another elementary school, a charter school. You still have the park right there. People can still use those fields for play. If it's adult education, now they have to take the Ramadas that they can go out and sit at during breaks, things like that. So we tried to think about everything as best we could down the road. But those are just some of the, some of the things to answer to our questions. Just to kind of wrap things up, the initial cost estimates for the master plan as presented is approximately three point two million dollars. By comparison, Desert Vista Park, which is similar in size and scope, costs approximately three point four million when we completed it in two thousand eight. Currently, funding for this project is not included in our CIP. So we're just at the very first stage of a years-long process. But despite that, with the updated and approved master plan, the town would be in a better position to begin identifying other potential funding sources such as grants. For anybody who's been around and who's gotten grants in the past, they often take years to go through the process and things like that. So this, even starting now, we're not too far ahead. In closing, you know, the facts that the master plan is presented will meet the future needs of the Fountain Hills residents and our user groups. And improvements would likely have a positive impact on the surrounding neighborhood and bring the park up to the standards of our other town parks. So just to add, at the March eleventh meeting, our Parks and Recreation Commission, we have a few of our commissioners here in our chair, approved the plan as recommended, and they also recommended the town council approve the plan. So with that, you know, if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to get a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Four Peaks Master Plan as presented.
Second, please. Any other comments? And no more speaker cards? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Goodbye, Brian.
Hello, Brian? How you liking it? Things up, though. Couldn't get away from it.
Consideration of the MAGA Archeo Life Cycle Program Addendum for the Shea-Sororo Project and authorizing the town manager to execute the addendum.
Sure, Colonel. Members of the council, simply put, the, with the economic downturn with Prop 400 that's out there, Prop 400 and the half cent transportation sales tax, it's funding a project that we have, which is Shea Boulevard, street improvements, asphalt improvements, signal improvement between technology and the B-line. It needs, on a funding payback, it needs to extend that out a little bit to reimburse us in fiscal year fifteen and fiscal year seventeen to provide a seventy percent grant funding for the project that they provided. It is a recommendation to approve the addendum. And the town engineer is here to answer any questions you might have any specific for.
Hi there, Randy.
Mayor, councilmembers, basically, this addendum to our original IGA with the Mercantile Association of the Government sets that there will be no adjustment for inflation for this current year, and that future adjustments for inflation in the amount of money that they have committed to the town projects will be at the discretion of the MAGA Regional Council of Governments, which the mayor sits on.
So, and so as I understand, the money is there, we just have to wait in order that it's going to be delayed? But it's still guaranteed?
Like any sales tax program, you know, they only have the money that they have. And so they have been reluctant to, with the downturn in the sales tax that they've had over the past few years, they're reluctant to commit major new funding to projects until they know they're actually going to have that additional funding command. And that's, that's all that this agreement actually does, is says, number one, there won't be any adjustment for inflation for this year, and future year adjustments for inflation will be dependent on Regional Council action.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the council? Any speaker cards? No, ma'am. All right. Can I get a motion?
Go ahead.
Move to approve addendum to MAGA ALCC Project Agreement Number Zero Nine S H A One Zero Zero Three B, which is Shea Boulevard, Technology Drive, to Serious Loss, and authorizing the town manager to execute the addendum.
Mayor, second.
Any other council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero? Thank you, Randy. Consideration of appointing an ad hoc committee to work with the town manager to complete the draft Economic Development Plan for a presentation to the council for consideration till later than July two thousand thirteen. Okay?
Sure, Colonel. Members of the council, you know, the draft Economic Development Plan that was presented to the council back in January, at that meeting, it was recommended that a number of other areas be included in it. I have struggled with those myself, and on those four areas, and recommend that we bring in some help from the community, because there's some expertise in the community to do that, so that I could at least get a report back to you by July, hopefully, which the ad hoc committee would then be disbanded from this.
Okay, any council discussion?
Madam, Mayor, do we have any?
Uh, councilman.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Please, sir. I just want to ask you any speaker cards, if that's all.
No, ma'am. Councilman, yes?
Was this by the end of July? I'm sorry, Mayor, or?
By the time in July, we're not going to have, I don't think we're going to have council meetings anyway that month, but we're looking at that time to have it at least completed and get ready to be presented back to the council.
Madam, Mayor, what, Ken, what type of schedule do you think something like this would take?
Well, hopefully not long. Hopefully, it will take the three months that I'm asking for.
But weekly, bi-weekly, monthly?
I don't know yet, until I get a committee and talk to them.
All right, councilman, yes?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, if I may. I move to adopt the current E V plan and assign resources or targeted funding in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen budget to implement the plan.
All right, then we have any speaker cards? No, ma'am. All right, any other council discussion?
Of course.
Councilman Al.
Thank you. Ken, you mentioned that some of the things that you were struggling with. Quite frankly, when you presented the draft plan, I thought that there was rousing support from the council for what you had presented. And as far as the implementation of that, I know that we're, we don't have any resources, really to speak of your, our Economic Development Department at present. I understand that. I'm just a little concerned about submitting this to another committee to reevaluate this after all the time has been spent already. I'd like to have some action as far as on behalf of the town. I'd like us to move forward, take two things, three things, whatever it is that the council wants to do, identify those, direct staff to allocate resources to that if that involves getting a consultant to assess Ken, to implement that plan and move forward on that. I would be in favor of something like that. I'm just, I'm just tired of rehashing and rehashing and rehashing. We've got some good plans. Ken has presented what I feel is a very good economic development plan. He consulted with many of the various groups in the community, including the Chamber, Fountain Hills Business Alliance, various business leaders, staff. I think he's done an exemplary job on a shoestring budget. So I would like to see some action and not have this devolve back down into an ad hoc committee to reevaluate this, rehash this. Let's do, let's do two things really well on this and move forward on this and not waste any more time. Because I would hate to see Ken's time being wasted working on, with this ad hoc committee. It's not to say there couldn't be some value provided, but I think what we have here is already a working plan. Let's allocate some resources, take some steps, take some action, and get something done.
I believe the, Ken, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the only reason why this has come up as an ad hoc committee is because the council has wanted to add four different categories to the original plan. And maybe you can explain that better.
Well, again, those four focus areas, retail, education, institution, attraction, population leakage for a demographically balanced community, and probably the one that I was struggling with most is the organizational approach was to implement the economic development plan. Additional language with that, I was probably, that's the one that's, because the plan calls for a summit. But from what I'm hearing from everyone subsequent to that, is that what we really need to do is get a structure together to begin the implementation of those action steps and action plans that were actually called out in the plan itself, itself. So maybe a little bit further thought into those, but you know, if you want to adopt the plan tonight, we can do it. But we need, we still need to talk about the approach, which can be done during, during the implementation of some of these other ones. But we need to be talking about how we want to approach this, because right now, I'm it. And the thing that I'm, you know, if you adopt it, then we're going to be looking, as I recommended to you previously, that we'll be looking at a contract for, not only with what we were already doing with the commercial side, but maybe looking at a contract to help me with the business attraction side with that. It'll be a contract, not a warm body, that we bring on staff as employees from that side. But then we still need to talk about the other areas and how we're going to approach those. We can always bring those back. We can still work with SPAC and the members there, because they've, I've got a number of those in the SPAC that are truly interested in trying to implement those.
So what I seem to be hearing here, and this is only one councilman, so I want to hear from the rest of you, is that as far as was the last meeting when we discussed this, that you wanted to not adopt it at that time, but to put in these other four issues to look more in depth into that. So are we saying now that we would like to go back and just adopt the original plan as it was, which we all agree was an excellent plan, and move forward that way? Is that what I'm hearing? And Councilman Hanson?
I would just like to put down the spot and ask what your preference is.
If you want to adopt the plan, I'll be happy to accept that. And I'll be happy to work with SPAC to come back with some of these minor points. And if, because we already have an existing structure there, rather than do an ad hoc if you want to. But I was hoping that I could take some members off the SPAC, as well as a few other ones in the community, to maybe address some of these other areas, to get a little bit more complete report for you. If you want to go ahead and do that now, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm sure you could still reach out to SPAC. I know you have two people that have already volunteered to help out. So just three, good. So I'm sure you can also reach out, do not make it a formal committee, but as you've done before, to reach out to them to assist you with that. And with that?
Mayor, pardon me?
Yes. Oh, Councilman Brown, from above.
Yeah, I'm out of line, so I guess it's time to talk, huh? Anyway, Ken, you know, I gave your development plan, your economic...
Anyway, Ken, you know, I gave your development plan, your economic development plan, high grade, and I sat here and listened to you talk yourself almost in a complete circle about how we could go ahead and implement this and at the same time possibly work in the four other items that we've talked about in the past. And so, as high as I rated your economic development plan, I am also an advocate of moving forward and working on it as we move it forward. And I would also like to make one comment on business attraction and say and explain that our senior services, Jim Thaddeus and Barbara Patterson Whitehead have been meeting with a kidney dialysis center and they met again today and they are making big strides in possibly getting a new business, a nice new business brought to town.
Uh, councilwoman Dickey? Thank you, ma'am. You know, those items that we talked about that night, I think we did kind of go around and figure out that most of it, even if it's not, you know, in a bullet point, was there. I know that Cesar really wanted to make sure we didn't neglect retail and there's already an education factor in there. The idea of having a community that has different ages in it and addresses different people is in our strategic plan. So, these items are there and to have all the consternation over just how we're going to fit it into something that exists there, I don't think that we anticipated that that's what it would be and so that's why I feel like we're really, every time, very comfortable with moving ahead.
Okay, so it sounds like we want to move ahead. Anyone else?
Just a comment, mayor, regarding something you said. You were referring to adopting the previous plan. I think since the previous plan, the town manager has actually made some revisions. And what I'm looking here in front of me, for example, on the business attraction, the retail and the education has been added to that. And when it comes to implementation, I think as we begin implementing, whether we're using internal resources or contracting out resources, those things start coming, will come together, you know, frosting the cheese and guarding the ice. And I think as we take a close look at the plan, for example, I'm going to focus on business attraction. I mean, there's a goal where the different business segments are clearly targeted and then we move into a game plan. And the game plan, from my perspective, is as close as going to get to an implementation plan as a group's going to come up with. For example, facilitate and or recruit new base sector employment opportunities. And there's action steps. An implementation plan has action steps in it. Ken has already included these in there. And in terms of the other additional EVs from SPAC, they're also an integral part of all of this. So, once again, you know, my motion was to adopt the plan we have before us and provide the latitude for staff to assign resources internally or otherwise and or target funding in the FY thirteen fourteen budget to not hire a full-time staff person, but to contract the services to implement this. And I would also include that that would exclude the summit, which didn't seem to get high and lost last time we talked about it. Just want to clarify that.
So, you're amending your motion? You meant there was no motion?
That was my motion. I was just clarifying a comment you made that we were okay with the previous plan and I'm simply saying that he has enhanced the plan since we gave him feedback.
I really, my comment was just in relation to the four issues.
Very good.
That they wanted.
Okay, so to clarify my motion, my motion is regarding what we have in front of us here. Thank you.
And then the second is still good with the clarification of the motion. Are there any, are there any speaker cards on this issue? No, ma'am. No, any other council discussion?
Just throwing this out there for the council, I mean, what do we see? You know, we can't implement everything that's in that economic development plan. We just don't have the resources for it. So, I mean, as the council as a whole, are there a couple of things that we see as most important? Am I opening Pandora's box there? I mean, is that, I mean, but just for staff, because we've had situations in the past where they've given staff ten items to do and we've got limited resources as far as what we can do, so we can only touch each one just a little bit. I would feel a lot better if we could do two things really well than ten things. Not so, madam, yes. Based on the way our residents have voted on proposed taxes and they told us on various outreach that they want economic development to pay for services, our biggest push therefore should be business attraction. When I say business attraction, it's not just retail because you need daytime population to help retail. So, that kind of goes hand in hand. So, I guess my personal input, based on my experience, is we go after the various companies that have large employee populations that would help our daytime population, but not just, and I have nothing against call centers, but obviously go after some businesses that better fit our demographics and some higher paying jobs as well as go after the retail. Some of these other things fall into place because you have some of these types of businesses, i.e. you bring, and I'm just generically saying, you bring a Pfizer Pharmaceutical as a regional office, you're going to have some high paying jobs, those families therefore move to town and then that addresses some of our other issues. But as far as giving our efforts, those are the things, last, two weeks ago, we talked about return on investment. That's going to yield the highest return on investment because as soon as you bring a company or organization into town that's selling widgets, we can calculate out what kind of tax return we're going to get therefore.
All right, this plan just gives us direction and I think that we really could look at all different areas as we never know what's going to come up. We are, he did say we wanted to concentrate on all these areas. I think we can look at all these areas and I think the idea of this is just to adopt sort of a master plan of where we want to go with economic development. And I think as far as what we focus on, probably the market will decide how we go about that. So, I have a motion and a second and.
Mayor, if I may, just to make a comment in response to councilman Alti's observation. I think it's an excellent observation. This plan is very difficult to get your arms wrapped around when you look at all of the different areas that we have in here. And I would agree wholeheartedly with councilman Yates that clearly the place to start is the business attraction. And I think as I've read this on so many different occasions, business attraction is then connected to all these other elements in the plan. And I think if we're successful with business attraction, it will start naturally giving birth to all of those other pieces of plans, but with limited resources. And the idea of maybe having a contract someone to focus on this work, you really need to narrow your scope. And I'm also hoping that when we get our exclusive broker online, that that broker can work in concert with whatever our resources that we're using. But I think a focused approach is important. And last time I was making that regard, I believe that anyone that takes a look at this and begins implementing it is probably going to come back to us and ask for a focus, so it's kind of second nature. Thank you.
There's a speaker card?
Yes, ma'am. Peter Bordeaux.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. Just a couple of thoughts. At first thought, adopting the plan in its current form with the changes that you made, I think that's not a bad idea. I read the plan also and being on SPAC, we had some input and all of that. I think it's a great plan. I do want to, with all due respect, point out though that if you just adopt the plan, it kind of puts the SPAC at square one where there's no mechanism or structure to actually put it in place or to actually pull the trigger and take action. I think part of the plan, and Ken, perhaps you can speak to this after I'm done, of the ad hoc committee, part of it was to formulate and recommend an actual structure entity or avenue to actually move forward and take action. Because it seemed like SPAC had one idea and I think that revolved around the forum. And I think the council had another sort of idea, which was around public-private partnership. And I don't think that's even still being resolved. I think voting on the plan is great, adopting it is great, but I think there's still a little piece missing. And see your thoughts on that, Ken. Thanks.
Well, again, Mr. Bordeaux brought out one of the things we just talked about, and that would be the approach. We can talk about, you know, many ways of trying to do that. We can bring, I can work with SPAC about talking about specifically about approach and come back with a recommendation to the council. I mean, as one, just off the top of my head, we did talk about that along the way, last couple of months, just to possibly do that. You still need to talk about a vehicle, about, if you're talking about business attraction, you still need to be having, we used to call them minimum hit groups, but you're going to have to have citizens that are there that if we do get a business prospect, they need to be sitting there with us, working with that entity, answering those questions. Because when they're coming in, the first thing they're doing is they're checking you off if you can't get everything that they need. So, the way that those dynamics work. But again, back to the issue of what Mr. Bordeaux was saying, I could easily talk to that with the SPAC because we've been talking with a number of those members anyway about this, Mr. Bordeaux being one of them, and talk about an approach and bring it back to the council.
All right, that sounds like a.
Mayor, when we do get to the point where, like what Henry was saying, they're going to be asking for resources or however we end up going, I would appreciate that that maybe sometime we have a discussion about the downtown excise fund and deciding if council wants to change the way we use that money, or at least the way it was set up for and then just kind of get that out there and figure that part of it out.
Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers of the council, councilmember Dickey, that's an excellent point. We were intended to talk about that in the budget. We wanted to have a placeholder of a number of amount of money that we think we can accumulate for an economic development plan that gets to be approved. If it's approved tonight, then we've got one that helps us further along for the budget so we can talk about it then. And that's going to be coming up fairly soon anyway.
Okay, go ahead. One last.
I think if we, perhaps, just to, again, just going back to what I was saying earlier, if we just have a real focused laser approach on things, business attraction, what councilman Yates said, but also attracting, you know, laser on. But also attraction of residents. And that's through the various activities, the events that we have here in town on St. Patty's Day, all the events and working with the various groups here in town. And we have the fund that's set up to help facilitate those types of events. So, we have perhaps a two-pronged approach, just again, so we don't spread ourselves too thin. I just think that's real important. I'll see you after, I mean, I need to see some.
And we're certainly including fashion in this because two of the volunteers who were going to help out Ken are from SPAC, so. We've got that covered too. Can I get a, are we ready? Vote now? All in favor? So.
Help me to a people, I've done that enough times.
No, I think we're good.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor seven zero? All right. Good job. Since you're ten, you were hoping to get that, huh? As you move on.
Please, please, you tell.
And then to the people who have already volunteered to help us out on that. Presentation and consideration of resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh five, ordering and calling a special bond election to be held in and for the town on November fifth, two thousand thirteen, to submit to the qualified electors the question of authorizing the issuance and sale of eight million two hundred thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligation bond project of two thousand thirteen. Ten.
Mayor Calhoun, members of the council, again, it's consideration tonight for the adoption of resolution two thousand thirteen dash oh five, ordering and calling for a special bond election to be held on November fifth, two thousand thirteen, to submit to the qualified electorate of Fountain Hills with the question of authorizing the issuance of the sale of eight point two million dollars in principal amount for general obligation bonds to reconstruct Suaro Boulevard. Should the town council consider the adoption of this resolution? It's a staff recommendation for a five-year debt service repayment schedule. It is a recommendation to approve the resolution and I'd ask the development services director to provide another further information regarding the type of work that we are proposing to do with Suaro.
All right, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Last summer, we were able to free up some funding and we hired a geotechnical engineering firm to go and take a look at Suaro Boulevard, Palisades in the downtown area and Fountain Hills Boulevard from Palisades out to the middle school. What they found was a little worse than we had anticipated. From the geotech report, the asphalt thickness on the roads was typically one to two inches of asphalt on two to three inches of subgrade. Typical cross-section could be four inches of asphalt on six inches of subgrade. The recommendations from the geotechnical engineer was to remove and replace the asphalt and subgrade. Based on that information, we looked at the scope for just the Suaro portion. We looked at, you know, doing the engineering design and construction oversight, reconstructing the road full depth, which would take out the top ten inches, come back with six inches of subgrade and then four inches of asphalt. We have drainage improvements that need to be done at Palisades and near the Desert Canyon Golf Course. We need to adjust any bowels and manholes. We legally need to make sure all the sidewalk ramps meet the current ADA requirements. We need to do curb repair and replacement. We have over fifty thousand feet of what we call excluded curb that just sits on top of the asphalt currently. So, when we dig up the asphalt next to that, it'll move and break and we'll replace it with actual curbing gutter, which helps keep the water off the road. We have to do striping and pavement markings. We have in there at the Avenue of the Fountains intersection, the three-way stop modifications that we discussed with council before. And then we also have the replacement of the traffic signal at Palisades and that's under a separate fund under the capital projects fund. Some projects we need to coordinate with. We're going to be working with Maricopa County Flood Control District to start design on the Ashbrook Wash Crossing of Suaro shortly. If the state trust land does come in, they could possibly be running a sewer line down Suaro from Fountain Hills Boulevard to the sanitary district treatment plant. The sanitary district also will be constructing a reclaimed water line to connect there two plants. I'm told those plants are at about the ninety, ninety percent design stage. Again, we'd coordinate with Chaparral City Water so they could, if they have any major repairs, to get those done, replace any services so they're not digging up the street right after we do the work. And again, we'd work with the other utilities, SRP Southwest, Gas, Cox and Century Link. So, the estimated design and construction is eight point six million dollars with four hundred thousand coming from the capital projects fund. So, that's where we get the eight point two million for the bond. This just shows the limits of the project, basically from Shea, right around Trevino area where the Shea and Suaro project will end, all the way to Fountain Hills Boulevard. The blue areas show the drainage improvements by the golf course and at Palisades. And again, the eight point two million from the bond and four hundred thousand dollars from the capital projects fund. Seen this quite a few times. This is just what the proposal is for the intersection at Avenue of the Fountains. We'd actually take it all the way back to the U-turn area so we would improve that median area as well because that's not currently included in the Avenue Medium project. This just shows some conditions of the road by the golf course, some previous flooding by Palisades. And then, as Ken, or the manager mentioned, we're showing the five-year repayment schedule that's being recommended. We also have the seven and ten-year repayment schedule, shows what the cost would be to the average household for a hundred thousand dollar assessed valuation, up to a million dollars. The geotech report did recommend replacing, you know, Palisades and portions and Fountain Hills Boulevard. We also have areas out on Shea that need replacing with the payment management program. We're going to try to cut out the work sections and put some micro-surfacing on there to make those last. It's anticipated, once this bond is paid off, that we'll be coming back for another bond for most likely portions of Fountain Hills Boulevard, Palisades and Shea. And if the bond vote is successful, we'd go out for selection of an engineering firm. That would take anywhere between November and January. Unfortunately, we would start the selection process right during the holiday season, so it takes a little bit extra time. And then if we have to do interviews, you know, that's. And then if we have to do interviews, you know, that, that takes extra time as well. Um, design, we were looking at around eight months, could be a little bit shorter, but we're just plugging that in for now. There would be a lot of survey work that we would need to do out there. Uh, then there's about a two-month public bid process to get the plans out to bid, and then we're anticipating, we're showing a eight-month construction duration. Could be less than that, depending on how much, um, removal and replacement that needs to be done. Uh, we're hoping that some of the existing asphalt and subgrades can, can be ground up and used as still again, rather than taking it all out. And then, once we get into design, we'll need to discuss, do we close one half of Suaro and flip traffic in both, both directions on one side? Construct that portion, open that up to traffic, then flip it. It's, uh, you know, do you wanna pull, pull the bandit out quick or slowly? So, we'll have to figure that out as well. Anyway, that's the presentation, and be happy answering questions.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that we're, right now is us concentrating on Suaro. Uh, all of the groups that I've met with, they've been very receptive to a bond as long as it's limited to just Suaro. They understand that ADA ramps and curbs and drainage and all that is a part of it. And they, but they have expressed that as long as it is strictly Suaro, and there's no extras in there, um, like in the last bond, that they, they see the need. Obviously, after the last storm that we had, and all of the packing that we had to do, we just hope that, uh, with the monsoon coming, that we can get through that without having to put a lot of money in before we can, we can actually redo the road. Um, are there, is there any council you'd like to discuss? Any? All right, you'd like to make a comment?
I would.
Uh, well, I'm sorry, Caesar cards? I don't know. Go ahead.
Uh, may I move to approve resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero five, ordering and calling a special bond election to be held in and for the town of Fountain Hills on November fifth, two thousand thirteen, to submit to the qualified electors thereof the question of authoring the issuance and sale of eight million, two hundred thousand dollar principal amount of general obligation bonds project two thousand thirteen for a five-year repayment schedule. Mayor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor, seven, two. Thanks, Paul. Discussion with possible direction to staff related to any item, including the League of Arizona, Susan Towns, weekly legislative supervision, or relating to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. I know I'm bouncing over to Ken, but if you want, I would like to explain a few things about the TPT and, uh, audit, if I can. As everybody knows, I've been meeting with, uh, lots of mayors, and, uh, the latest, what we have so far on the striker bill is we have so far successfully gotten back our prime contracting, so that we, and actually, it is still at the sixty-five percent. They were negotiating with us that they wanted to give us fifty percent, but it seems that just now out of the striker bill, we are going to be getting the sixty-five percent of prime contracting to stay in Fountain Hills. Whether they are still going with their original, um, proposal to also do point of sale is still uncertain. They haven't decided that part. Now, the big part that we disagree on is the audit. They are proposing that all audits go through the DOR. If DOR decides that they can't handle it, then what they're offering to us is that we can hire DOR on our own, uh, which means that we can no longer do audits through our own auditing, uh, company. And this is not only, this is not only, uh, affecting our ability to audit our small businesses when we have the need, this is also affecting the larger cities that have actual staff on, that do the auditing. That basically means that if, um, Scottsdale, they have their own auditors on staff, if this goes through in its present form, Scottsdale literally has to fire their entire auditing staff, because we will no longer be allowed to do our own. There was a proposal, uh, through the League of Cities, they were asked to come up with a flow chart at our last meeting on Monday, uh, and they did come up with a flow chart where they, we all compromised that the DOR could be the gate, sort of the gatekeeper, and that, uh, all, one of the, one of the big concerns, uh, was with the multi-jurisdictional audits, like SRP, uh, Century Link. And, uh, we did agree that all of those would go through the DOR, and that no municipality would do a second audit or a third audit, that DOR would be able to say, you know, SRP is being audited or has been audited in the last couple of years, so we are making the decision that, uh, they're not gonna be audited. That is, that's one thing that satisfies all of them, to make sure that there are not multiple audits on, um, the major, the major companies that have multiple jurisdictions. So, um, aside from that, the other part of, of the, uh, flow chart was supposed to be, our proposal was that if, if DOR decided that they couldn't do the audit, or didn't want to do the audit, for instance, a lot of the small towns brought up the fact that we have many businesses here that are exclusive to our town. We constantly refer to Joe's Coffee Shop, that was our example, Joe's Coffee Shop being only in Fountain Hills or only in Mesa. Uh, DOR didn't seem like they would be interested in an audit like that, so we proposed to them that they would have first option to do the audit, but if they didn't have the resources or chose not to do it because it was a small business, that they would take it back to us, and we could do it on our own, our own auditing firm. Uh, as of today, they have adjusted that, and they, uh, they just, they just don't want us to do the audit. They wanna do all the audits. I, there's a lot of this that still has to be worked out. They, um, they are probably going to have to hire a lot of people, and I don't know what kind of, uh, turnover. I have asked DOR, if we ask you to do an audit, what is the amount of time? You have to give us some sort of a timeframe that you're gonna even make a decision if you're gonna do it or not. They haven't been able to do that yet. They were suggesting six months. We said six months is too long to make a decision on it, so they're still considering that. So I think that it is still in our best interest to fight the audit the way the DOR wants to do it. Um, if the prime contracting stays the way it is, we go back to the way we were, and we're okay with that. We still will get our construction sales tax, but I think it's worth it, um, to continue to fight, uh, for our own audit. And I, if anyone has any questions, maybe I can answer them on it. Nope? Sure?
No, I, I, I agree with you, Mayor, and in fact, I think we, as, as a town of Fountain Hills, we can handle our own audits. We obviously have done quite a good job. Our finance department's done a wonderful job with that. Um, Councilmember Round spoke to that, um, earlier about his experience with the DOR. And this is, it's kind of on a smaller scale, this is the, the, the state of Arizona trying to, you know, essentially increase its numbers, its employees, and take away the local control. And I, I don't think there's room for compromise on that, frankly. I, I don't, I don't see why our local businesses should have to go through the, you know, DOR, uh, for, for their audits, or the DOR should have write a first refusal on this, or we should pay the DOR to do the audit, which is ridiculous. Um, so I, I hope that, uh, the League and whatever it is that you're doing down there, Mayor, that you're able to voice our concerns on that.
Absolutely. We intend on continuing the fight. Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Reagan gave us like this choice sort of a thing. I, I think, um, uh, it's something that has happened a lot in the past, when it came to school districts or other things where they would say, hey, you know, X school district doesn't agree with you on that, and it kind of divides people up by asking that way, because they're saying, well, this is a rural school district, and the SCA is sending that, saying this and that, and we don't know what to do because we're not getting a, uh, unified message. I don't think that's the case at all. I think they're getting a very unified message. The League is speaking for everybody, even towns that have plenty of construction, uh, Home Depots or whatever like that, and they keep, and they don't talk about the fact that we had her, heard earlier that people will buy stuff out of state too. So to say that this is going to increase any sort of sale tax coppers to the state as a whole, I think is, is not anything that we can really rely on. So I don't think that we should have to make a choice like that. I think it's very clear that the League and all of the cities and towns want both of those things to happen and, or not to happen against the way they're, they're being, uh, you know, presented. So I don't think we should have to make a choice like that, and I don't think we want either of those things to happen.
And we're, we're also questioning the figures that they're using to say that they're thirty-one percent on non-compliance, and to say that somehow they're gonna be, uh, getting a lot more money if they implement this. Uh, the recent study that came out by J O B C and also, uh, Grand Canyon University, their two studies came out pretty much the same, which was saying that there's a possibility that if this is implemented the way it is, that the state could actually lose a hundred and thirty million dollars. So the figures aren't there, and so what the mayors and the League are asking is that let's not jump into this. If you, if you wanna, uh, still look at this, there are some things in, in this, um, in this bill that everybody agrees on. So that, that seems to have passed out. The portal has been agreed on. Uh, they made some modifications to that, and that's all been agreed on. But as far as the audit and the TPT, all of them cities and towns are in agreement, the League is in agreement. We're united front to fight this, because we're all going to lose in one way or the other. Uh, we have an outside auditor, but Scottsdale and Phoenix, they have their own auditors on staff, so they're gonna lose that way. They might have big boxes where they're gonna make some money on a Home Depot, but they're gonna lose if, if a big development comes in and they decide to go to Portland to buy all of their lumber. So everybody here is gonna lose something, and that's why we have compromised a little bit because we had to. We couldn't just go in and say we want everything, and that's why we've had so many meetings with the legislators, the senators, with, with the governor's office, and we've made it pretty clear that the audit is not acceptable, we're willing to compromise a little bit, and if DOR says they have to be the gatekeeper, they have to be on top, well, we can, we have to compromise to say, okay, that's all right. But if you can't do the audit, then take it back to us and let us do it. And the interesting, the thing that I thought was pretty insulting was when DOR said, well, the reason they wanna do this, because I asked them, what is your reason? Why is it that you don't want us to do our own audit? And they said it's because, well, we wanna make sure that the cities and towns are being business friendly. They actually implied that the DOR would be more business friendly in an audit than we would, which I don't think anybody would agree, that they would rather go to the Department of Revenue than come to their local town, and after speaking with our own finance director and learning how much we help our businesses, I mean, I clearly said to the DOR representative, we're in the business of keeping our businesses in business, and whatever it takes. And if it takes maybe reducing a penalty, or maybe working with them to make sure that they stay open, that's what we're gonna do. Are you gonna do that? Well, they couldn't answer those questions, because that's just an excuse. The entire thing is that they want control of the whole system, they wanna hire their own people, and the state is, is just gonna expand at, at the expense of us, and we lose our local control. Yes?
Mayor, one nuance of the, the actual TPT and construction sale tax collection that's in this amendment, and, and as you heard Senator Reagan say, this amendment is, is a work in progress, and it's been characterized to me as three weeks behind our negotiations. So I don't want everybody to get too excited about the language of it, but there was a change in there that we need to be very vigilant about, and it was the addition of the bridges, roads, and other horizontal construction distinctions that's now been carved out. So the proposal as it currently stands is not the same kind of TPT collections that the town is currently doing. It has that carved out, and it has a local trade exemption as well. So I think that those two pieces still make that a very harmful type of collection for the town. If it rolls through the way it is in the amendment, that's one more thing that we're all gonna need to keep working on, uh, the local representatives to make sure it doesn't turn out that way.
The, the other issue that they had, didn't have in there at all was they weren't even gonna consider remodeling for tax purposes. And we're insisting to them that, uh, we, we do want that. I know one of the mayors brought up a case where, uh, somebody knocked the entire house down in just west of Sydney, and then claimed so it wasn't, you know, it wasn't taxable in that town. So, uh, we wanna make sure that the remodeling is also part of the prime contracting. And, and I haven't heard that that's included yet, so that's another issue that, uh, Representative Resco said this one's gonna make sure was taken into consideration.
Mayor, thanks for ten, so that was on the horizon. Last night, in another trap they mentioned was that they said, uh, one of the things that they said they would offer to the cities was that this money would then be more money that would be available for shared revenue, but the cities that get the most shared revenue have the largest population.
Right.
And if you're the one that's supplying all that growth, even though you have a small population, it just, it really isn't distributing it in a way that it would seem like it's supposed to be there, so.
That's right. Thank you for bringing that up also.
And, um, just someone I mentioned in the other bill too, that is kind of funny, because, um, Senator Reagan said, you know, she expressed surprise that I mentioned it, but I mentioned it because I kinda had a feeling that one of the speakers was gonna talk about, which was this UN Agenda Twenty-One thing. Um, the, uh, the bill, the fourteen oh three that we were talking about, that did pass today with sixteen votes, and, um, Senator Reagan said she voted for it, so sixteen is the minimum, you know, that, um, the reason behind the bill, and this is from the, um, uh, Sen- or Senator Burge, yeah? So she said that the plan, that they, uh, the plan calls for government, this is what the UN, um, Twenty-One, Agenda Twenty-One is, calls for government to take control of all land use, individual rights are to be given away to the global community as determined by a global governing body. Furthermore, the contents of the program reveal that people should be rounded up off their own land and re-located to human settlements close to employment centers and transportation hubs. So the bill that passed, and it's really interesting, 'cause now on April sixth, we're having the fit dedication trail, I would venture to say that if this bill was passed, we would not be allowed to do these urban trails. And that's what I was trying to get, um, to the bottom of, what is the real ramifications of this bill passing? And it would be, you look at these urban trails, somebody at, since the UN summit says that this is a, you know, a plan for buses and to move everybody and change the zoning, and said that we got some sort of incentives from Valley Metro, which I, maybe we need to test on that, because we're not getting any incentives from anybody.
Oh, to wish we did.
So basically, uh, and, and, and I can see that, you know, and I didn't really wanna put on the spot, 'cause I know there's a thousand bills, but they voted yes, and they passed a bill today that probably would make our urban trails illegal if it passes. So, just so you know.
Okay. Anything else, Paul?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. I appreciate all the work that you and Mayor Isidori and thanks, thanks for the update. Um, something, um, Senator Reagan said tonight I found interesting. She said that, you know, she doesn't seem to be getting the message from, from the council members. And what I'd like to propose, and I don't think this is, would be a lot of work or recommend, is that Ken, uh, redraft the previous letter that was sent out, uh, to the mayor and our representatives, once again stating the current position, and, um, in this case, in text, rather than saying the town of Fountain Hills, gonna distance to saying the town of Fountain Hills, say that the, the, the town council in its entirety, or something to that nature. Um, I, I, once again, I, I think it, it can hurt, and based on what, uh, Senator Reagan said tonight, um, I just wanna make sure we, we get, send some letters down there.
Yeah, the original letters were sent to, um, uh, Senate President, um, Fig, um, to Senator Reagan and to the governor's office, but they weren't from the town, they were from me as mayor. But I think it's a good idea to have, um, something else sent from all the councils.
Sure, exactly.
And myself, so we show that we're all, all unified and that.
Well, you're part of the council, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, the town council.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But the original letter, letters were from me, not from Ken.
I understand, thank you.
And, and Senator Reagan did respond, no one else did.
And, and Senator Reagan did respond, no one else did. I was hoping there was something from the governor's office, but I didn't. Anything else? Uh, didn't you have any announcement? Or you're going to do it? Who wants to do the tonight, the, the?
Our cell.
Our cell. I thought, I thought you were going to do it.
Quick, quickly.
You're going to do it.
Quickly, Mayor, members of the council, pavement management. There is going to be some work starting next week, um, regarding the milling of, of those pavement failures in Zone Six, as well as on Talasaves and South, Fountain Hills Boulevard. There will not be any lane, road closures, there will be some lane restrictions that's going on with that. So that's, we'll start, begin, starting the process with that. There's an egg extravaganza on, uh, March, uh, twenty-third with, uh, Flucky the Chicken and, uh, Hoppy the Bunny.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that'll be there for, uh, this, this week. I just want to make sure that we pointed that out. Uh, how many eggs?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand stuffed candy and other prize eggs.
Are you going to be dressing up as a bunny?
No, I won't be Hoppy the Bunny. I'll be gone. Don't ever stand between a kid and an Easter egg hunt. I know that. My old rec- my old recreation days, don't do that.
And those off nine AM sharp, the kids got to get there early, and then if parents can bring cameras to take pictures.
And later that day, there's a kite flying event in the park, uh, that afternoon, um, eleven, eleven AM to six PM. Um, as well as, uh, the concert in the park that will be following Sunday. If you're, if you're an R and B fan, some rhythm and blues concert in the park on Sunday afternoon to, to thirty to, uh, four, um, four o'clock. Also, uh, March thirty-first, there's Easter sunrise service again in the park for the non-denominational, um, coordination by the, uh, Fountain Hills Ministerial Association. Lastly, there's, um, Earth Hour. The Earth Hour is this Saturday night at eight-thirty to nine-thirty. Uh, you have it on, we have it on our website, uh, many activities that could be, um, if anyone wants to observe that. Um, but, uh, if you want to observe it, turn off your lights between eight-thirty and nine-thirty on Saturday night. That's all I have.
I want to say that we got an email from, from some folks asking us to participate in Earth Hour, so, um, while we're still allowed to talk about, uh, environmental things, I'll read what some of the, the lady said to me, uh, in those emails, that on Saturday, March twenty-third at eight-thirty, thousands of cities around the world go dark for one hour during Earth Hour, which is an annual campaign to raise awareness of environmental challenges we face. Earth Hour is a simple idea that quickly turns into a global phenomenon. Hundreds of millions of people around the world turn off their lights for one hour at the same night to focus on one thing that unites us all, the planet. Earth Hour has been celebrated on all seven continents, landmarks all around the world, turn off their non-essential lighting, which includes the Sydney Opera House, the Empire State Building, the Sears Tower, which is, is something different now, uh, the Golden Gate Bridge, the Space Needle, London City Hall, and Rome Coliseum. And there's also a lot of cities, uh, around the world that participate, um, businesses and organizations, Hilton Hotels and Girl Scouts and IKEA, and even the National Hoppy League. So I think that, um, that one feels a deal for me. So just consider it, it's not, it's nothing about like counting your, you know, how much less energy you've used, and then it's just, uh, something for that people think about it.
Okay, thank you. And most of you done?
No moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you for hanging in here.